Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education regular meeting this evening. I'm going to start with the call to order of this meeting. Joining me this evening is Mrs. Rattelli, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly and myself, Jen Jacobson, and of course, our superintendent, Mr. Stani. If you could all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we're going to be moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Student Reports. Welcome to our students from Fairfield Ward and Fairfield Ludlow. I don't know who's going to be going first this evening, but tell us what's going on at school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annika and I'm a senior at Ludlow. During all of the lunch waves last Thursday, the Falcon Council hosted a gingerbread festival with a gingerbread house making contest. It cost just $5 to enter and all proceeds went to the FLHS Compassion Committee. We raised over $300 and it was a lot of holiday fund for the students involved and we have some shockingly talented gingerbread artists at Ludlow. Speaking of the Compassion Committee, they're working with the Falcon Council to conduct the annual gift card and donation drive, which collects donations and gift cards to donate to families in need in our community. Particularly during this holiday season, it promotes a lot of positive spirit and unity in the school community. On Wednesday last week, a Ludlow alumnus from the class of 2016, Ellie Hainsey, came back to Ludlow to speak to the senior class about her struggles and successes with mental health. She's now an entrepreneur running a clothing company called Hainsey, making hoodies, sweaters, and other apparel, displaying uplifting messages like "Here For You" and "Love Hard." Ludlow's Future Business Leaders of America Club, just FBLA, won the FBLA Shaping Success Chapter Award for completing a number of tasks and challenges presented to them. Congrats to them and we're really excited to see what they will accomplish in the new year. I hear they're doing even more activities and competitions. Yesterday, Ludlow's Red Cross Club ran a school-wide blood drive in the small gym. Shout out to Senior Amelia Valillo, who was the only student volunteer helping out in this very noble cause. On a more cheery note, Ludlow's Music Department has been working very hard to put on our annual production of Candlelight, the holiday concert. Tickets are available for all members of the public online and the concert will be on Thursday, December 22. There's also going to be performances for the 5th graders and 8th graders, as well as performances for just Ludlow students on Friday, the 23rd.
Hi, my name is Agatha. I am a junior and I would like to just say, you know, about Candlelight, the students really do work very, very hard to make the performances memorable. They take time out of class, they make up the work on their own time. It's a very large undertaking and they really do it with love. So, very exciting. Model UN on December 3rd, Ludlow's Model UN team attended a conference at the University of New Haven and we won Best Delegation out of all the schools present. A number of Ludlow delegates also won awards. Congratulations, Annika Martin, for winning Best Delegate, Ewan Dignan, Will Abbott, and Katia Yang for winning Best Proposition Paper. Also very exciting, we have mentoring. Ludlow students have been running a, Ludlow actually has been running a mentoring program at Riverfield where our students have the opportunity to pair up with one student and mentor them, with one elementary school student specifically. And due to the program's popularity, it will be expanding to other schools. It's very, very exciting. People are very, very excited to help the younger generations and have this opportunity in general, especially students interested in childcare teaching in the future. And we also have the Bella Boutique. It is a complete staple at our high school. It is run by Mrs. Huber, our fashion teacher, and her classes learn how to run a store. They learn entrepreneurial skills and everything in there is handmade by the students or bought somewhere that is renewable and has trustworthy sources. So I would encourage you guys, if you can, let your children or children that you know, check it out. It's very exciting. We also have the pep rally on Friday. We're going to have our winter prep rally and it celebrates all the winter sports teams. Students are getting very excited, as we always do. And we also have Radio City. Last week, Ludlow's Choir Department performed at Radio City Musical for the Christmas spectacle. Spectacular, in front of the New York Rocketeers. Students from the Chamber Singers Group opened the festivities of the night, singing African Noel and Seasons of Light. One of my friends went there, she enjoyed it a lot and the performances were beautiful. We also have the Holiday Advisory. Last Wednesday, Freshmen, Sophomores, and Juniors Home Room extended the opportunity to students to learn a little more about winter festivities around the world. Personally, speaking from teachers' perspectives, a lot of my teachers with freshmen homerooms, freshmen were very awkward when they first entered their homerooms. They don't talk much and they don't really interact with the classroom. And this really made them open up and kind of share a little bit more about themselves. I heard that the teachers were very excited about that and so were the students. A lot of interesting things were shared. And then finally, we also have a program by the Raft and by our Raft Club and FCYC. It's called the Snowman Exchange and it costs $3 per person. You can personalize your snowman, it's a pencil snowman, and you get to send it to a special person in a homeroom, your friend, whoever you'd like. It's only three bucks and that's also very exciting. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ryan and I'm a senior at Fairfield Ward High School. Hi, my name is Ida and I'm also a senior at Ward. Recently, in the Ward community, Ward's Chamber Choir had the exciting opportunity to sing in an opener at Radio City Music Hall. I had the opportunity to talk to some of my friends who went on the trip and they said it was a fun-filled day for the group and a rather memorable experience. Also, this Friday, Ward will be having two in-school performances of our annual holiday concert, Carolan, for the student body, specifically the seniors. The Music Department has been hard at work and can't wait to show and share our talent to the school. PSAT scores are in for the 9th, 10th, and 11th graders. Mr. Cavanna reviewed with these students how to access these scores and their college board accounts during a virtual assembly. In addition, this Friday, the class of 2025 organized and is hosting a charitable winter social to support Toys for Tots. Equally as exciting is the upcoming meeting with the sports captains for the winter season that our athletic director, Mrs. De Giacomo, will be hosting. In this meeting, the captains will be decorating gingerbread houses, which is really fun and exciting. Today during homeroom, we had an activity period where we heard from Mr. Kudsko from Kevin's Afterglow and Gillian Anderson from My Friend Abby about suicide prevention and mental health awareness. We got to make support bracelets for our peers with the inscription "Here For You" and "Our Contact." This activity was courtesy of the Fairfield Ward Youth Cares Club. And finally, we are proud to announce that 31 students from our Music Department made the CMEA Western Region Music Festival. We are so proud of all their hard work. We wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday and winter break. Thank you.
Thank you. Lot happening. Is there any questions or responses from board members to our students this evening? No? All right, so if we don't see you till next time, just want to wish you guys a really happy New Year and enjoy the last week of school before you have break and thank you so much for your time. Obviously, welcome to stay, as always, but if you'd like to go on your way and get things done this evening, you're free to move on. So, thank you so much. Okay, at this point, we will open up to public comment. Just a reminder for those of you who may be new, when you come to the table, please, you have to press the button on our microphones and hold it while you speak. There's a limit of three minutes on public comment and if you could just state your name and address for the record when you come up. And just a reminder that public comment is on Agenda Items before us this evening. So if anyone would like to start off, if we have any public comment, feel free to come on up.
Is it all right? Can you hear me? Speak into the microphone? Okay. So I'm Steve Bogan. I live in Black Rock-Termpike in Fairfield. I've been a resident for 25 years. I'm a member of Fairfield Cares and I was asked to read a statement regarding the Fairfield Cares Youth Survey demographic data. So, that's what I'm doing. I'm speaking on behalf of Emily Melnick, who is the consultant on the demographic data survey. My name is Emily Melnick and I'm a professional evaluator who has been employed as a consultant with Fairfield Cares to analyze youth survey data for the past six years. I work in a similar capacity with school districts across Connecticut. We have effectively used this data to better understand Fairfield youth and design effective prevention strategies that have resulted in lower rates of youth alcohol, vaping, and marijuana use. In order for community members of Fairfield Cares to continue to best support Fairfield youth and provide them with the necessary support to thrive, it is necessary to continue to identify subpopulations of the student community. One of the largest subpopulations in Fairfield are students who identify in the LGBTQ+ community, youth who are unsure, and those who are questioning. It is particularly important that we monitor outcomes over time for LGBTQ+ students, as existing research demonstrates they have greater at-risk outcomes and lower protective factors. Without the ability to capture anonymous and confidential data that identifies students by subpopulation, Fairfield Cares will be unable to continue to implement appropriate strategies, activities, and programming that can support this higher at-risk group of young people. In addition, it's integral to the well-being of LGBTQ+ that they have the ability to self-define their gender and group identify. The ability to understand the makeup of Fairfield 7th to 12th graders is, in terms of full range of demographics, is critical to the community's ability to successfully design and implement prevention programming to appropriately support all Fairfield youth. The process, if you take questions, I can, I'm not going to answer them, I'll just jot them down.
No, thank you for asking the question, though. It's just public comment at this point, but thank you so much. Hold and hold it the whole time while you talk.
Making sure I'm holding the right thing. Hi, my name is Wendy Bentevegna. I live at 271 Village Lane, Southport. I'm a longtime member of Fairfield Cares and the parent of two children who went through the Fairfield Public School System and participated in the surveys numerous times. And I'm speaking in support of the survey, specifically the demographic questions related to gender identity and sexual orientation. These questions, by the way, were previously approved in both in 2016, 19, and 21, as they appear now. It's well documented that people identifying as LGBTQ are at greater risk of depression, self-harm, and suicidal ideation. And to be able to gather data that can separate out information related to subpopulations at higher risk, who may require special services or special attention, is critical. Further, the ability to gather this data over time in repeated surveys with the same questions and wording allows us to track behavioral and attitudinal changes, as well as track the progress of our efforts. While the survey allows us to obtain this information, it does not identify the individuals providing it. It's confidential, anonymous, and voluntary. Parents can opt their child out and the only question a student taking the survey has to answer is their grade level. Otherwise, they can skip a question if they're not comfortable, don't understand it. But the information provides a roadmap for creating a proactive and focused plan. If we can't desegregate the data by subpopulation, we can't properly support these students. It's for these reasons that I ask for your support of this important effort. Thank you.
My name is Dabney Bowen. I live at 317 Vernon Hill Road in Fairfield. I've been a resident of Fairfield for nearly 20 years and both of my children attend the public school system here. The lady that just spoke pretty much said everything that I was going to say, so instead of boring you with repetitive, with repeating what she said, I will just give testimony. I have a daughter, or I have a child, who is at Fairfield Ludlow High School. They are freshmen. They identify as LGBTQ and they have many friends that I have met that also identify as LGBTQ, both at Ludlow and Ward. My child began to see the difference between themselves and other students and friends their age when they were about nine, that their gender and sexuality identity was somewhat different from the societal norm. And so for the naysayers out there who say, "This is a minority, there are not that many kids out there that are LGBTQ," or "It's just a phase, they don't really know what they're talking about," or certainly they wouldn't know at 9, 10, 11, 12 years old, I'm here to tell you that absolutely they do. And those kids need our support. There are many friends of my child's who use different names at school, change their clothes at school, use different pronouns at school, and they are scared to let their, have their parents or their family members know that they identify as either non-binary or transgender, or that they are queer. And this is sad. And we need to do everything that we can to support these kids, to give them a supportive environment, and to let them know it's okay for them to be them. Not everybody has that supportive environment at home. So, just like we try to give these kids a supportive environment at school with substance abuse, with, with mental and emotional, physical abuse at home, or hunger, or poverty, or any of the other things that at-risk children suffer, it's our responsibility to address this as well, at least until we live in a time when these groups are not ostracized. So, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Wendy McCaffrey. I use she/her/her pronouns. My current address is 320 Lake Avenue, Bridgeport. I just moved to Bridgeport three months ago. For the last 10 years before that, I lived at 178 Mill Hill Terrace in Fairfield. I have two teenage children. I am a lesbian and I'm a member of the queer community. I'm also a licensed clinical social worker, who has been working for almost 20 years with both adults and youth who are struggling with their substance use and their mental health. There is ample evidence that queer youth are at a higher risk for mental health difficulties, suicidality, and substance abuse concerns, which is why it's imperative that we include every student voice when developing programming and services to address their specific needs. By approving the revised language put forth today, you are not only helping to prevent queer students from harm, but you are also helping to elevate and uplift the LGBTQ+ student leaders. And these same student leaders will develop into adults and they will become adult leaders. And speaking as a Fairfield resident, it's my opinion that Fairfield needs more queer leaders. These students should be treasured and mentored, not ignored and not othered. Currently, I'm working at the Triangle Community Center in Norwalk and as a part of my work there, I get some exposure to middle schoolers and high schoolers in the Norwalk public schools. This important work has been made possible because the city of Norwalk, through surveys just like the one you're talking about tonight, the surveys found that the LGBTQ and queer students does indeed have a need for additional specialized services. I have begun to have, working, be able to work with staff, administrators, school counselors, social workers, and directly with the LGBTQ+ students in the middle schools and the high schools in the city of Norwalk. The purpose of this work is, of course, to address the underlying mental health issues within the student LGBTQ+ population, but I am also finding that the work is very simply just clearing obstacles for these students so that they can learn, thrive, and become tomorrow's leaders. As we know, for many students, school is their safe place. School is their home. School is where they can relax and where they can be themselves. School is where children get fed. Adults pay attention to them at school. I am learning that many of these LGBTQ+ students are only out at school. They cannot be out, they cannot be themselves at home. And it is due because of the parental concerns, parental oversights, and family norms. For these particular students, it is critical that they receive effective services and programming at school in order to properly address their mental health needs and the environment they feel most comfortable in.
I'm so sorry, did you finish up? I just want to keep everyone on the same timeline. I'm so sorry, three-minute limit, yes. I'm so sorry, but thank you so much for coming.
Hello. My name is Jacqueline Bush. I live in Norwood Drive in Fairfield and my pronouns are she/her. I'm the parent of a 4th grader and a 7th grader in Fairfield Public Schools. As a parent, my primary focus is supporting students who've recently come out to themselves before they feel safe to come out publicly. That gap is when those students are most vulnerable. It might be a few months, a few years, or even a few decades. As the locations where students spend most of their time, I would hope that the two safest places for them are at home and at school. My son came out publicly as non-binary and transgender in 6th grade. He has a supportive family. However, I am deeply worried about the LGBTQ+ community and the students who do not have a supportive home life. Learning about Title IX protective legislation, issues regarding use of pronouns, and keeping up with LGBTQ+ language has been a steep learning curve for us all. Happily, Fairfield Public Schools is committed to this learning and supporting my son. Fairfield Cares Coalition surveys prior and continuing inclusion of LGBTQ students is essential to the health and well-being of our entire student population. Of the 1,300 students that answered in 2021, 13% of both middle school and high school students identified as LGBTQ+. Please note that this Cares survey is anonymous, optional, and answered directly by individual students on Survey Monkey without teacher input. The survey question on gender is a necessary data point. The inclusion of the option "non-binary" is in line with the many options for gender that already exist within Fairfield Public Schools' Infinite Campus Portal. Personally, I'm tired of being forced to advocate for non-binary students' existence. I'm tired of being forced to advocate for transgender students' existence. It's actually very difficult to speak for an entire community, some of whom may feel erased by the removal of the prior questions. However, I feel that including all identities under the LGBTQ umbrella best serves the purposes of this survey, substance use and mental health wellness for 7th through 12th graders and the subsequent programming. On behalf of my family and my community, including those who do not feel safe to speak out in this space today, I ask the Board of Education to demonstrate its commitment to the entire student population by voting yes to LGBTQ+ inclusive data questions in Fairfield Cares Coalition 2023 survey. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vicky Gustafson. I've lived in Fairfield for 51 years. I was a school teacher for 22 years with an alternative high school and I have two lovely children who are grown on their own. I am proud to read a letter from one of your other Fairfielders who could not be here and I would like to read that now. Dear members of the Fairfield Board of Education, I'm writing in strong support of the Fairfield Cares survey and related demographic questions. I am a social worker and parent of two children in the district. I am also the CEO of a nonprofit in Norwalk that has been at the forefront of getting the same survey conducted in that school system. In fact, we have built an entire strategic plan around the results of that survey and the incredibly alarming rates of depression, suicidal ideation, and self-harm among students, particularly those who are identified as LGBTQ+. Being able to disaggregate data to pinpoint subpopulations that require specialized attention and services is absolutely critical. As anyone with even the most basic knowledge of research knows, asking questions in the same way over a period of time also provides crucial longitudinal data that is necessary to measure our progress. This survey is confidential, voluntary, and anonymous. Furthermore, students are able to skip any questions they do not care to answer or understand. I see no reason, certainly none that are backed by science and research, not to have this survey with its amended language unanimously supported by the Board of Education. Respectfully, Jennifer Barahona of Cardinal. I totally agree with her. I think it makes perfect sense and I hope that you all agree.
Anyone else for public comment at this point? Okay.
Push. Okay. Hi, I'm Katie Greedy. I live at 176 Hunter Road in Fairfield. I am a 2nd grade teacher at Holland Hill School and I'm also a mother of four children. One is a student at Ludlow High School and the other three are recent graduates there. I am transitioning the conversation a bit, but it does have to do with our calendar and conferences. To be honest with you, everything that was just said backs my points I'm about to up even more, in my opinion. As many of you know, being parents of students who have gone through or are presently in a Fairfield Elementary School, elementary teachers take a tremendous amount of thought and effort into what we share at parent-teacher conferences. We include classwork and important data from all subject areas. We teach everything. As well is the imperative social, emotional learning and observations we have about our students. Parents, in turn, share very important information with the teachers regarding information they have about their child that is relevant to their learning, whether that is medical history, past experiences from other grades, or family changes and experience that may affect their child's learning. Every person who spoke so far spoke to this. These conferences are an imperative part of parent-teacher connections and a highly effective form of communication for all of us in the district. As a parent, I looked forward to both the fall and spring conferences because it was a 15-minute block of time to hear about my child's progress, ask questions, and build a relationship with my child's teacher. As long as I have been a parent or teacher in the district, these conferences have been scheduled for 15 minutes at a time. If we go to a two-day schedule, as is being proposed, instead of three days, I'm not going to bore you with the math. You can do it yourself. But we do know that 3rd through 5th grade teachers can have up to 25 students. Mathematically, I originally was going to bore you with math, I won't. Mathematically, contractually, I don't think these hours are going to even be work, so we'll have to go to 10-minute conferences. Realistically, 10 minutes is not enough time to meaningfully share such critical information with, whether you're the parent or the teacher. If we would like the parent-teacher conferences to continue to be an effective, productive, and meaningful form of communication that helps build bridges between parents and teachers, then I implore the Board of Ed to reconsider three days for the conferences. Otherwise, in two days, we will simply be rushing through important information and making decisions not to share such critical information. We will be running through the motions and parents may not feel as at ease to share important things because we are rushing. important things because we are rushing. More stressful situations will occur because there'll be shorter conferences. People will be running later, and that precious time we spend on these conferences will be reduced by a third.
So sorry, is it Greedy?
You got my point, but please, implore you, three days is really critical.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hart from 270 Merwin's Lane. I'm here tonight to advocate for changes to the facilities principles in order to prevent school overcrowding and increase learning opportunities. In 2021, the National School Board Association conducted research on infrastructure and school-building credentials. They concluded, "Students that must learn in an overcrowded classroom and teachers that cannot find a workspace to prepare lessons are in distressing situations." The research they conducted throughout the country demonstrated that buildings with overcrowding and insufficient space resulted in reducing students' ability to pay attention, increasing behavioral issues, increasing the rate of both student and teacher absenteeism, negatively impacting reading and math scores. Furthermore, students who had teachers with inadequate workspace performed significantly lower academically. This vote today, tonight, is our opportunity to improve our facilities principles so that the Fairfield students do not face these problems. In the aftermath of COVID, with greater social and emotional challenges and needs, population shifts, as well as inevitable redistricting, it is crucial that we do everything in our power to give our children the best chance of success. I hope that you will vote tonight in favor of maximum capacity of 85%. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristin Clark, 405 Queens Grant Road. I'm here just to build a little bit on Sarah's point. Thank you for your time, first of all. I'm also here to encourage the Board to adopt the proposed changes to the facilities principles, specifically to change the target elementary utilization from 90 to 85%. At another meeting, one of the Board members mentioned that their child had their gifted program held in the stairwell of their elementary school several years ago. I think we can all agree, this is an example of where we can do better and exactly what we should strive to avoid, and I'm sure that there are countless other examples of this type of situation that have happened in the past. Just this month, I learned that our elementary schools will need additional space in the very near future. With the closing of the Centralized Math Academy at Holland Hill, each elementary school will facilitate a program for accelerated math. Although the fourth-grade program will not require additional space, the fifth graders, who will be doing the sixth-grade curriculum, will need additional space for math. Again, this is just one example of many needs for programming now and in the future that are increasing. I will not go into great detail, as I'm not well-versed, on the facility's needs for services and other programs, but in listening to many of your committee meetings, it was clear to me that there is an increasing need for space to facilitate both the programs that exist and potential programs in the future. Specifically, I've heard a lot about ECC and the CLC having additional space at more elementary schools. So I think if you vote to lower the target utilization, all parents in Fairfield will be assured that no matter what happens with redistricting, their children will have the appropriate space they need to learn. Please vote to approve the proposed changes. Thank you.
Okay, just time. Moving on to the next item. If everyone doesn't mind, I'm going to ask for consent by the body to move up 7A on our agenda under "New Business," the approval of the Mill Hill construction project, just so we can accommodate the guest that has come to present on that item. Is that okay with everyone? Yes, okay, thank you very much. So with that, we are going to move to approval of the Mill Hill construction project. Oh, sure. I'm going to make the end of, just the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve Mill Hill Project Number 051-0149. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Vitale. Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Hi, how are you? My name is Jason Lee. I'm the chairman of the Mill Hill Building Committee, and I am pleased to announce the completion of the addition and the alterations of Mill Hill Elementary School. We all show, you all have the packet, so I want to just do a couple highlights. We did expand the school. We added four new classrooms, improved and added two music rooms and art room, updated all the boys' and girls' bathrooms. The key couple of things are, the entire school now is HVAC, has HVAC and central air, new sprinkler system, fire alarm system throughout, new ceiling, LED lighting throughout the school. And another key thing I know throughout the town is we have removed the portables. There are no portables at the school anymore. So during this entire time, the project went smoothly. We worked well during COVID. I can't say enough about the building committee's commitment. March White's are in his company, Gil Bain, the constructing company. We stayed on schedule throughout. We had one hiccup on just supply. We ordered it straight ahead. We planned ahead. The previously chairman, the late Tom Quinn and I, he made sure everything was laid out. So we are happy to hand the school back. Sal from the town, we did a final walkthrough yesterday. It is complete. The building committee will stay on until end of June. We are holding back $35,000 for landscaping reasons due to the harsh climate we had this summer. We had to do some reseeding and stuff, so we decided that we're going to make sure that everything is blooming bright and nice, and if not, we'll return the money back to the town. Right now, early estimates is we'll be returning $100,000 back to the town.
Okay, any comments or questions by Board members? Mr. Peterson.
I'll just say very quickly, thank you, thank you for all your work, and I do want to call out, I think Tom Quinn, my great friend Tom Quinn, would have been very proud of your efforts.
I appreciate that. Says a lot.
I'm glad you shouldered that weight admirably, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Isa, did, oh, no? Oh, okay, yeah. I think we all had the same thought in our mind, but thank you. Anyway, oh, sorry, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, hi. As the liaison to the building committee, I just wanted to thank Mr. Lee for really stepping up into some very big shoes and just doing an amazing job with this project. I've been on a number of building committees, and I will say this one was just incredible how smoothly it went and how well it was run, and I think that's really testament to the committee and the other people who worked with it, and thank you to Sal as well for another very lengthy series of meetings. But the school looks great, and I think it's a really good testament to the work that's been done by this committee and by the staff, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber, I mean, Mrs. Vitale.
I echo my fellow Board members' further thanks to Mr. Lee, to your committee, to Mr. Morabito. Had the pleasure of once again touring the school a few weeks ago, so I thank, and thank you for the time, and just may put it out there to either the Chair or the Chair of the Facilities Committee about potentially asking you to host any members of the Board or potentially some other town bodies. I think it would be wonderful for, you know, other members to see the wonderful work that your committee oversaw. So just putting it out there, I'm happy to hear that you'll be around for at least another six months or so, so we can get more people in there to see what a beautiful job you've done.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Gerber, for representing the Board on this project.
We'll be happy to hold something, and I'll reach out to everyone, and not an issue.
Mrs. Maxon-Canelli.
Yes, I'm not sure if anybody has acquainted Mr. Lee with the custom that you promptly segue into a new building committee. So that was the precedent set by Mr. Quinn. I'm sure you would not want to disappoint him, but I would just say that your phone number is undoubtedly on speed dial, so congratulations. I already welcome you to the next building committee.
Thank you much. This is my second one. We segued it off.
And I just wanted to also thank Mrs. Gerber for serving as Board of Ed liaison on this project and all the time that you've committed to it as well, so thank you very much. So if there's no other questions, then I will take it back to the Board. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda, special programming updates and facilities by Mr. Mancusi.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education and Special Programs. Tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to review our specialized programs, share some enrollment information, and then answer any questions that you may have regarding our spacing needs or projections for growth, or any other questions that you may have. Okay, these are the programs we're going to review tonight. We have our Early Childhood Center that we're going to review. This is our preschool program. We have our, for our three- to five-year-olds, we have our Complex Learner Cohort Classrooms, which we'll discuss. These are, we call our CLCs, and we have CLC programs pre-K through 12. We also have our Early Literacy Academy at McKinley Elementary School that services elementary students. We have our Therapeutic Learning Center, which is our elementary program at Riverfield School that services our elementary students with the most significant social, emotional needs. The Relaxation Station is the middle school portion of that program. They are named differently only because those are the names that our students chose to name the programs, so we encourage that. We have our Impact Program, which we will be discussing. This is our high school program that provides the highest level of mental health support to our high school students. Then we have Walter Fitzgerald Campus, which is our alternative high school, and we have our Community Partnership Program, which is for students who need specialized programming beyond their four years of high school, and some stay with us until their 22nd birthday. This is our program that we will discuss a little bit, that is primarily located right now at the University of Ridgeway. I won't read through these slides because I know you've had, you've had this slideshow for the weekend, but our ECC program, for those who are watching TV or those behind me, it's our, it's our program that begins at age three. Students are determined eligible for special education at that time upon their third birthday, and if determined eligible, they may receive specialized half-day, extended-day, classroom-based services. They may receive itinerant services where they come in for speech therapy, occupational therapy, social skills, or any combination of those services. Those are services for students who are eligible between the ages of three and five. And we get those referrals from either the state of Connecticut through the Birth to Three program, or through our community referrals, or from parent referrals. We have our ECC Evaluation Team. We have a special education teacher, a school psychologist, and we have a speech pathologist, who are permanent members of the ECC Initial Evaluation Team. And in addition to doing eligibility determination evaluations on students, they provide consultation and professional development to our community preschool colleagues in Fairfield. To date, they've completed 51 eligibility evaluations this school year. Last school year, they completed 128 in total. The ECC also accepts non-disabled peer role model students. We've talked a lot about this, and we'll get into the numbers in a few minutes. The non-disabled peer students are tuition-based. Students who are free and reduced lunch, or, I mean, free and reduced lunch, do not have to pay. Full tuition is $4,994. Transportation's provided to students who qualify with IEPs. And parents of tuition students or peer students who want transportation to and from the ECC, that's $400 a month. I keep getting confused by the direction of the arrow. I apologize. Okay. These are class enrollment numbers. There's AM and PM numbers. You know, if you ask preschool teachers what their, what their ideal number for programming for in terms of the size, our teachers would probably tell you 12. We like to have a max or set a max of 16, over 16, and we've gone over 16 in the past. The classes do get more full. So you can see what our numbers are right now. These are the ECC Ward classes. These are the ECC Stratfield classes. We have more classes at Ward than we do at Stratfield. These are our peer ratio numbers. As we've talked, you know, we had this conversation four years ago when we did this presentation in 2018, when we were looking at space needs for the ECC. Our goal is to establish and maintain a 50-50 ratio of peers with students with disabilities. And as you can see right now, I don't, you know, we're struggling getting to that. And I will add, as the year goes and we continue to identify students, those ratios typically over the year drop, but we can talk about how that may be able to be prevented. So again, our goal is to establish and maintain that 50-50 peer to student with disability ratios in all ECC sections or ECC classes. Okay, then we have our Complex Learner Cohort classes, or our CLC programs, and these run through, we have them at the ECC, and they run through high school. So we'll talk about where they're located in a moment, but these are for our students who really, there are, with, there are students with disabilities with significant or developmental disabilities who require, you know, the most intensive specialized programming that we offer in the Fairfield Public Schools. We also added a cost avoidance of outplacement tuition per student enrolled in the CLC. How we came up with this cost avoidance figure of $132,500, which is a 10-month program, does not include ESY. We just averaged the annual tuition of the four or five, you know, outplaced programs that school-based teams might, through the PPT process, recommend students who struggle in our CLC programs be placed if we're not able to appropriately program for them in district. So that is a real figure, what it would cost per student if we were not able to maintain programming in the Fairfield Public Schools. Sorry, guys. Okay. This is our CLC enrollment currently. At Ward and Stratfield, we have one CLC each. Those students, it says 13, that includes several students in each site who are currently on consult with the program because they're borderline whether they need that level of support. We currently have two CLC programs at Burr with a total of 15 students. We like to cap our programs or classes each at 10. It used to be at eight. We've been able to over time stretch the capacity for each TLC class to 10. So at Jennings, we have one of 10. Mill Hill, we have 15. As many of you know, the Mill Hill CLC is new this year. We moved that program, which was a longstanding program from Dwight. And then we have two CLC programs or two CLC classrooms at Osborne Hill, which is a long, well-established CLC program. At Fairfield Woods Middle School, Roger Ludlow Middle School, and Tomlinson Middle School, we have one CLC class at each school. And then at Ludlow High School and Ward High School, we have two CLCs at each school. There's a total of 16 CLC classes throughout the district. And as of December 8th, our total for CLC students is 134 students who are enrolled in our CLC programs, pre-K through 12. Okay, we are now the Early Literacy Academy. This has, is a program that is in its second year. We have 14, soon to be, I think, 15 students at McKinley School. These are for students who generally qualify for special education or who have a specific learning disability, dyslexia, or a significant language impairment. It's students with disabilities who have previously demonstrated limited progress on goals and objectives despite the efforts that we've put in to close that gap in reading. And students in the Early Literacy Academy, they receive increased intensive structured literacy instruction. This is the program that we have established in partnership with Literacy Howe and Marjorie Gillis. And, you know, we're very excited about the progress our students are making in this program. And you see the cost avoidance there. Again, that is a combination of PPT outplacements where students with dyslexia may be placed through the PPT process or at, you know, a private, parentally-placed setting that parents might choose to place their students in. So this program allows us to keep students with significant dyslexia in district. And, you know, with the partnership with Literacy Howe and Marjorie Gillis and the training involved for staff, both general and special ed, I think it really, you know, this is a program that I am particularly proud of, and I think the Fairfield Public Schools is, should be proud of. Early Literacy Academy, this is, you know, just enrollment by grade. So we have 14, we have 15, we have one placement pending here. Again, these 15 are, you know, divided among two classrooms or two teachers. We have our Therapeutic Learning Center, which is our elementary specialized program that's located at Riverfield School. It's to support students with significant social, emotional, and behavioral issues. And the cost avoidance on this, again, this is a 10-month projection on tuition, and it is a 10-month day program, a therapeutic day program. It's a combination or an average of, you know, the three or four placements or approved private special education programs that we, a PPT, may consider for students who are unable to, you know, make adequate progress on goals and objectives in the TLC in public school. And this is our enrollment. Again, we cap at seven, and that's done intentionally so we can meet the intensive needs of the students enrolled in the program. So right now, we have a lot of fifth graders. We're planning on transitioning to, you know, middle school, whether that be continuing in a similar program or if, you know, if they're able to get supported without being enrolled in the TRS. The Relaxation Program is our middle school program that offers the specialized social-emotional support. Both these programs, the TLC and the TRS, have a full-time special education teacher assigned to it. And they have a full-time social worker or a full-time school psychologist to address the therapeutic needs of the students. We do also have BCBA consultation for specialized behavioral programming to work with us. It's the same consultant that works with both programs so they can assist with a seamless transition from one program to another if the student transitions to the middle school program from the TLC. And again, that same cost avoidance, students would be similar to the TLC. Students enrolled in the Relaxation Station or the TRS would, if the PPT were to potentially outplace, they'd be in a similar placement. And this is our enrollment. Currently, we have nine students, broken down by grades, as you can see.
Excuse me, can I kind of, very quickly, just to ask a clarifying question? When we're talking about the Relaxation Station, we're talking about the CLCSs here, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
We used to call them that.
We called that, yes.
We have renamed them, but that's, these are the programs, we're not also, we don't also have CLCSs.
These are what we previously called CLCS.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, I apologize for that confusion. Alright, then we have Impact. Many of you were on the board when we started the Impact Program back in 1819 school year. As many of you are aware, this is the program that we, you know, replaced with the previously contracted program from Effective School Solutions. This is our program for high school students who need the highest level of mental health support to be successful in our high schools. We have two dedicated Impact Social Workers at Ludlow. We have two dedicated Impact Social Workers at Ward. We have one at Walter Fitzgerald. At the comprehensive high schools, you know, we like to cap it at 20. That doesn't mean we can't go above 20 if we feel it's appropriate or we can meet the needs of the students, but that's our guideline. And these are students who get daily DBT group. They get executive functioning strategies instruction in their learning centers. And they receive additional individual counseling support according to their needs. Our staff in our Impact Program have gone through specialized training. Some of you may remember when we talked about the training that we did with Dr. Ellie Leibowitz from Yale Child Study Center on specific protocols to follow for students who may be school avoidant or school refusal or have difficulty coming to school, as well as specialized training in the development or strengthening of what we call executive scales or executive functioning strategies. We did some training with a guru in the field from Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Her name is Dr. Peg Dawson. She's written many books in the field. She's well-known in the field, and, you know, we enjoyed our time working with her over the course of three years. Again, the cost avoidance for an outplacement tuition in a therapeutic day program is the same as the others, the other social-emotional programs. It's about $80,000. This is the cost of a 10-month day program. It's not the cost of a residential setting, which those can be high cost or a lot higher than these. So, but generally speaking, if a student who's been in the Impact Program continues to struggle and the PPT is considering potential changes, the first thing we look at is potential day programs, and that's what that cost represents. And here we are with our, we put in blue and put in red so you can easily identify what high school those numbers are attached to and what grade. Again, the guideline is to cap at 20, so right now Ludlow is at 17 in their Impact Program, and Ward is at 18. And in addition to the two social workers, we have special ed teachers attached to the Impact Programs that work with the Impact students as well. And then we have Walter Fitzgerald, which is our alternative high school program. It focuses on students' emotional well-being. These are for students who are successful in more, in a smaller, more supported environment with lower teacher-to-student ratios. We implement restorative practices. Our social worker, who runs the Impact Program there for up to 10 students, has gone through the DBT training that all the other social workers have gone through. They have a PBS or PBIS program at WFC. And we also have three additional mental health staff at WFC to support the social well-being of our students. So we do have, we have two licensed clinical social workers at WFC, as well as a school psychologist, and we have a school counselor. These are our current numbers. As of December 8th, currently, we have 45 students enrolled at Walter Fitzgerald. I'd like to give a shout-out to my colleague, Amanda Kirik, who's the principal of Walter Fitzgerald Campus now. This is a significant increase in enrollment than we saw pre-COVID. So our numbers generally were around 25 to 35, so we've increased our numbers. We've also, the board has given us permission to accept up to five tuition students from districts outside of Fairfield or our area districts. Currently, we do not have any tuition students, but we have had tuition students in the past, and as most recently as last year. And again, the cost avoidance for day programs, similar to Impact, and, you know, it's just the older version of the TLC/TRS programs for high school kids. It's around $80,000 is the cost avoidance per student for a day program, for students who attend WFC but cannot be successful there. And then we have our Community Partnership Program, which, as I stated, is currently, we're housed or we have a contract at the University of Bridgeport. We really enjoy our expanding relationship with the University of Bridgeport. We're in year two there. And just for those who may not remember, when COVID hit, we could no longer go onto the campus of Fairfield University. And when they reopened, you know, we had to look for alternative space. We found space in a great partner and friend at the University of Bridgeport. So this is for our students who, upon their four years of high school, they need continued work on post-secondary transition program beyond their four years. And if appropriate, they may stay with us for their 20, until their 22nd birthday. Students in the CPP are currently learning on jobs-on-site employment skills, and these are just some of the various job sites that currently, as of today, we have. We have more job site opportunities, but to match students where they're best fit or where their interest lies, these are the several job sites we have. So we have the Food Pantry and Residential Life at UB, we're at Fairfield Town Hall. We are, you know, we have a job site up here at Central Office. Bob Store, we've been there for years, along with Walgreens. And our workshop, Maritime Aquarium, one of our former specialized parents. We've developed a relationship with her, and it enabled us to go to Maritime Aquarium, which is a great place to go. The kids love it there. And then JP's Diner on the campus of Sacred Art University. And then, you know, we continue to grow our partnership with UB. We have access to the entire campus. We have our dedicated space on the campus, which is far superior to what we've ever had. In addition to that, we have access to all common areas on campus, which we regularly, you know, go to. And we signed, we have a contract with them, a rental contract, for $20,000. $60,000 was budgeted for rental for CPP space, but because UB is highly motivated to maintain and continue to grow their relationship with Fairfield Public Schools, you know, this year, we were able to get that at $20,000. Last year, the tuition was 15. And then here's our CPP enrollment. We started with 22 students. We currently have 18 students because, as I stated before, kids age out now on their 22nd birthday. So we've had four students who have turned 22 during the school year. So, and then just the cost avoidance per outplacement for a transition program per student enrolled in the CPP is about $52,000. And that's an average of some of the placements that our students who don't attend the CPP might attend for post-secondary transition programming. That is my brief overview of our specialized programs in the Fairfield Public School. So I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much. One thing to the chair, I always think this would be really helpful to share with the other town bodies, especially leading into budget season. And with that in mind, I just, I mean, there's a lot here, and obviously, there are a lot of really amazing things that the programming, that all these programs do, and lots of intangibles that you probably can't put in a report like this. But just to kind of get it down to like numbers, because obviously, we're heading into budget season, and that's something that's always of tremendous amount of interest, our special education cost outplacement. And math has never been one of my strong suits, but I did go through and just based on all the numbers, it looks like all of these programs, if we did not have any of these programs, that there would be an additional cost of $27,104,149. I mean, I think that's a number that really needs to be shared. You know, just to say that, you know, we have all of these in-house programs that provide a tremendous amount for hundreds of students in our district. And I think we really need to, you know, celebrate that in a lot of ways. And not just about the money, but again, I've got it on the brain because we're heading into budget season. But I think that that's something that we really need to continue to share with the other town bodies because I think there's always kind of a glass half-empty, you know, just looking at the costs and tuition and things like that. But, you know, we do so much good, and again, so much in the programming that we should be celebrating. But those numbers mean a lot to a lot of other town bodies, and I think we really need to continue to, you know, make sure that people understand that. So thank you so much for providing all this.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Gerber. I will definitely develop a slide with, and I was going to do it for this, but I knew the number was going to be really big. So, and we do typically, particularly for the Board of Finance when we do our presentation, we do like a projected or a potential cost avoidance that if we didn't have these programs, particularly our Impact Program, definitely our CLC programs, and really, all our programs to keep students in district. They would cost a lot more if students were not able to be educated within the Fairfield Public Schools.
Go ahead.
Just one more. So just looking at the programming here, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but obviously, a lot of these programs have grown over time. And knowing how much that will factor into our facilities discussions, do you have or will you have at any point soon a sense of just how much, you know, do we need to factor in additional CLCs moving forward? Do we need to have, you know, additional sites at other schools perhaps? Just what is your take? Do you think it would be more valuable to have more classrooms in the same site? Or would it be better to have, you know, additional classrooms in different sites? Do you have any thoughts on that or not?
I do have thoughts. I do have thoughts on that. I think in talking to my colleagues, like the Program Directors of Special Education, who oversee programming at each of their levels, I think at the middle school and high school level, we're okay right now moving forward. I definitely think, and we will be projecting or, you know, budgeting for next year, an additional CLC potentially at elementary school and/or at the ECC. We're starting to see a lot of impact at the younger grades in terms of the fallout from COVID and the behavioral challenges, particularly in addition to the learning loss. So, right now, I like the way that we're set up at the elementary with CLCs, feeding into the feeder patterns, but our numbers continue to continue to grow.
One quick follow-up to that, if I may. When we get to the conversation around facilities, that piece of information about the ECC is going to be very important in terms of where that sits historically and to today and going forward. So, meaning, are you seeing that number higher than it was for the current CLCs we have now? Meaning, we can project needing more going forward, or is that a number that this number would serve going forward? So that's a question for us to hone in on.
If I can just make a brief comment, and then we can come back to that. Our CLC numbers continue to grow. At the ECC particularly, where we are challenged by space, is building the classes where they're set up to maintain or to establish and maintain that 50-50 peer to student with disability ratio.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Asa.
So my question somewhat, well, one of my questions ties into Mrs. Gerber's. So when we're looking, let's just look at the elementary at the moment. So, CLC and TLC. So if we're looking at CLC enrollment at, for example, at Burr, Jennings, Mill Hill, Osborne Hill, number of CLCs, does this directly relate to number of general ed classrooms?
Yes.
Okay. So when we look at the CLC, we've got these number of classrooms that we need to obviously continue to account for in our facilities planning. But when we go to the TLC, you know, this is obviously spread out over grades, and five of the seven will hopefully be moving on to the next grade, leaving two. So how, just out of curiosity, will that impact the need for a general ed classroom? And are they currently using a general ed classroom?
They currently have a general ed classroom for their, for the TLC. With five kids moving up to middle school, I mean, there's always students that are always on our radar as potential future placements. But for whatever reason at the time, including combination of students that might destabilize a program, we still continue to work on supporting them in their home school. But I anticipate we're going to have more than two students in the TLC to begin next year.
So would it be safe to say that moving forward in the short-term planning over the next few years, are you comfortable with one general ed classroom dedicated to the TLC, or do you see us needing potentially to hold or reserve more space down the road?
With the TLC particularly, you know, there's been a lot of discussion over the past couple of years about splitting that into like a K2, 3, 5, because when there's fifth graders with first graders, sometimes the dynamic there can be a little challenging. So what I would say is, we would, we would like two classrooms for the CLC for future planning.
Thank you. That's what I was asking. And one other quick question. And again, to Mrs. Gerber's point, the cost avoidance, I was doing the math and came up with a similar number. So this really is, you know, not only phenomenal from the budget aspect, but the idea of keeping this many kids in district is really excellent. But I do have a question on the cost. I noticed you used the same number carrying through for many of the outplacements. But I was just curious as to, without getting into any details or identifying things, is there a way to explain why there's roughly $50,000 more for a CLC versus a TLC or some of the others?
The cost of programming is very different to the needs of a CLC. I mean, you're talking about students who may need, you know, nursing care, they may need assistance with feeding, they may need assistance with toileting, just the, they may need more paraprofessional support, they may receive more related services such as occupational therapy, or physical therapy, or speech therapy. So they're a lot more involved, and their needs are a lot more, you know, significant.
Okay, that's great. That's what I assumed, but I appreciate you clarifying that for us and the public. So just back to Mrs. Jacobson's point, you know, we look and see what we need now at the elementary level as we go into these talks of facility planning and redistricting. And one of the reasons the Facilities Committee had talked about lowering that cap, that percentage of headroom, was to make sure that we had room for this ever-growing population and the needs of students to make sure we're meeting them. So I would like to see a number, a number of, in the next five years, this is what you think pie in the sky you need for this programming and other programming, because we are going, it is going to be a guess, and we will have to understand that. But we do need to take that into consideration when we're talking about moving kids throughout the district, even if it's just down the road to a different school. We need to make sure that we get this right, and that we plan appropriately for these spaces. So I appreciate this presentation. This was very helpful. But I would like, please, in the near future, if we could have some definitive numbers, or best guess estimates would be very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, we can get that to you before Christmas break is, or, you know, Mrs. Jacobson, whenever you need it.
Well, ideally, the sooner the better. We are going to be having a meeting when we, when we talk about, you know, we have to develop a charge for the consultants. So that is coming, and will be coming shortly after Christmas. So before that meeting.
We'll try to get into this Friday's packet.
And clarify, Mr. Asa, you are speaking to ECC/PK through grade five, correct?
Yeah, I want to know the numbers for the elementary schools for any programmatic general ed classroom needs.
Okay, thank you.
Specific to space needs, or projected enrollments?
How many classrooms do you need? And if you have defined schools like we have now, if we're keeping these, we need to know, are those numbers solid? Are you going to add, plan adding at a specific school? And if you have that information, that would be very helpful.
Mrs. Vitale.
We have a facilities meeting next Wednesday, don't we? So, you know, you want to get those numbers. But for me, this is not just sort of, you know, you're not just talking about next year or two years. We're talking about sort of a long-term idea of classrooms. And I would even add to that, that this is not just CLC projections for pre-K through five. I know you talked about potentially being okay at the middle school, high school level, but if we're talking five, 10 years down the road, I'd also like to put in there the ELA projection, because I imagine this program will only get bigger. I'd like to see it in every school, so kids don't have to be relocated to one particular school. And then what are we going to do for our middle school students as they transition from the elementary schools and still need that support, moving into middle school? If you're projecting any space needed for that, you know, down the line, of course, as the program grows, that'd be good to have in there, too.
Just so you know, you know that part of the, part of the partnership with Literacy Howe and Marjorie Gillis is the professional development piece. So we have started to have middle school staff go through that training this year in anticipating, in anticipation of, not next year, but the following year, the students who are going to need that level of support in the middle school. We're going to be discussing during budget season, expansion to a third class at McKinley, and then the following year, the middle school piece and what that will look like. So in terms of this projection, we'll include that.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? The ELA Academy at McKinley, are they meeting, there's two of them there right now, are they meeting in a general ed classroom each? Meaning two?
They each have a classroom, like each of the teachers has, has like a classroom, a specialized classroom, that's like a general classroom. Students go there for two to two and a half hours of intensive structured literacy support during the day, and then they're supported in the general ed setting. They're assigned to, you know, a general ed class, just like every other student. And the general ed staff who work with our students in the Early Literacy Academy have gone through, or are going through, the structured literacy training with Literacy Howe, so they, you know, they have the skills or the capacity to support kids across settings. In addition, we have a literacy coach, who you guys have met before, she was here and did the presentation for us, Allison Ibanez. She's with us two full days a week, so she rotates her time between the two classrooms within the resource setting, where the kids are getting the intensive support, and then in the general ed setting to work with teachers and paras and support students across settings and general ed settings.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Did you, go ahead, Mrs. McAsland.
That's all right. And I apologize if I ask anything that was asked while I was out of the room. One question, I'm just going to go in order through the presentation. For the ECC enrollment, did those numbers represent all of the non-disabled peers who wanted in, or were their numbers restricted due to the total class enrollment? In other words, could we have come closer to the 50%? Or did we not have the interest for it?
Mrs. Bruno, can I call you up to answer that?
Hi, I'm Kristin Bruno. I'm the Program Director for Early Childhood. We are still accepting applications for our peer program and placing students. We are, we will restrict morning classrooms, just based on the numbers, but we are still accepting for afternoon. So everybody who's wanted and been willing to accept the session that was available has been placed, and we're still making placements for peers.
So the point being, this is still very much growing post-COVID, because I know that pre-COVID, this was actually an incredibly competitive, you know, space, these spaces were well sought after, having had a child interview for them. I mean, it was tough to get in, and then COVID derailed that, and so this is now still coming back from that. But the point being, this does represent all of the non-disabled peers who had wanted entrance into the program. Yes. And then, secondly, I was wondering if you could, and maybe this is too soon for it, but knowing the facilities discussion we're going to have, or maybe if the chair wants me to wait on the question, I'm happy to, so let me just say it. The thoughts on how the program is evolving, with it being in two sites, because at some point, we're going to need to have the discussion on the definitive. Right now, Stratfield has still been viewed as temporary for right now to alleviate the overcrowding up at Ward. But I don't know if you have any reaction. And again, I'm happy to defer the question to a later discussion if the chair would prefer.
No, I'm happy to, you know, while we have the staff here available to get some input on this as we head into that conversation, I think it's helpful.
Because again, I know that the teachers at the ECC had strong opinions on this.
Very strong opinions. We met on November 29th with the teachers. We met on December 8th with all the paraprofessionals from both sites. And, you know, when we had this discussion in October 2018, it was a very different discussion with staff that we've had now. There was a lot more, you know. They always wanted as a whole, one site, but it's unanimous now. They want to be together in one site. They feel the programming opportunities in one site. And the collaboration that it would allow between staff and paras, and the community, they would be able to build with families and not be split in two or more sites, you know. There's, they were extremely clear. And many of you will remember them out there in the audience with their tie-dye t-shirts. They're ready to come out and answer any questions or express their, their opinions on this. But they, they're pretty unanimous that they would prefer one site for the Early Childhood Center.
Because of course, the significant difference now being that it's now been several years where they've had this experience. So, thank you. That's interesting to know. Hold on, let me move on to my...
Mrs. Vitale?
And this might be hard to really measure, given the past few years with COVID and the effect that's had. Have you seen any difference in terms of the transition from preschool to kindergarten, between whether or not a student attended the ECC at Ward, or attended the ECC in an elementary school setting?
I think that is hard to answer, because each child is an individual and the components making up their transition. I think the bigger, there are other challenges with the transition from pre-K to K, not necessarily where the pre-K classroom was located.
What I would say, and this is a general statement, post-COVID, transitioning preschool kids to kindergarten has been increasingly challenging.
I would expect that. And, you know, having had a child that was at the ECC at Ward and had a wonderful experience, and had a great transition to kindergarten, but there was some discussion at the time that it might be easier for students who are attending preschool in an elementary school, that at least they would be familiar with just being in a larger building with more students, with older students, and the hustle of bustle of being in the elementary school setting might be one less transition that they have to make. So I was just really wondering if you had any information, but I appreciate the answer to that question.
Next question was regarding the CLC enrollment. Would you regard this as a fairly stable number? And by that, I mean, is this a, because it is my impression that this is a program we're generally not exiting students from.
That's correct.
Okay. So that this is a number that going forward, in terms of budgeting purposes, that this is all fairly, we can count on this?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, and by the way, back to the number issue, I know you must, you're, have every instinct in you must scream at the thought of displaying a high number to other town bodies. But back to Mrs. Gerber's point, this is really a high number we do want to advertise, so you're going to have to fight your instincts on that one and put it out there.
We'll fight.
There you go. For the CLCs in the three middle schools of five, four, and seven, how many staff does that involve, again?
There is a full-time specialized teacher. Then there's, you know, the related service staff that's assigned in the building to, you know, that caseload is included in that. We have BCBA support assigned to that, a certain, you know, it's adjusted according to enrollment annually. And then there's one or two ed trainers in each, in each program and a para. So for example, for four, like RLMS has four, the way our staffing, and I will tell you, the staffing this year is a little bit different because of the staffing shortage. It's a lot different. But in the past, if you had four, you had one teacher, you had one ed trainer, and you had one para. So, or you had two, one teacher, one ed trainer, two paras for four kids. So it's a one, it's been historically a one-to-one staffing. Pre-COVID, we started to move away from that and take one out of that to try to like increase staff capacity to work with dyads and triads, or small groups of students. But again, COVID really threw a wrench into, into that.
But in that regard, did it turn out to show us new possibilities for staffing models? And which, which also then worked. It's not that we were doing it for budget reasons, it's because it actually worked.
I'm going to sit here, and I'm going I'm going to sit here and I'm going to say, it opened up a lot of opportunities for further discussion on staffing models. I've talked to Mr. Testany about staffing models, particularly for the CLC, and I've talked to our consultants in terms of what the professional development might be needed in order to, you know, implement a different kind of staffing model.
Thank you. Regarding the Early Literacy Academy, my thought, and I thank you from Mr. Vitale for pointing out that, you know, this is a place that we might grow, but I had also thought part of our point for doing the training was that students wouldn't need to be pulled into the Early Literacy Academy, that they, their needs would be able to be met in their home schools, and thus, the program would not need additional space. Am I misremembering that?
You are not misremembering that. That is long-term, like, as you know, Dr. Zavajansik and his department is working with general ed staff and getting them that structured literacy training, we're doing the specialized piece. The idea is that over time, you're going to have capacity to meet the needs of students with dyslexia or significant language disabilities across schools, therefore, you know, we would not need to have a specialized program in each school. They would, students would be able to receive that specialized structured literacy support in their home school through their IEPs.
Right, and I certainly could see that there's a role for having still an early literacy academy, that there are some students whose deficits would need this intensive a program, but this isn't necessarily going to keep growing to three than four sections.
Yeah, you're correct.
Thank you. Sorry, let me just check the rest of my questions. Oh, one other question regarding the Walter Fitzgerald campus, because it's not referenced here. My understanding is part of the point of the alternative high school as well is credit recovery.
Correct.
So.
That was just, you know, an unintentional omission, I'm sorry.
No, quite all right, just wanted to check. And my final question regarding the CPP program, thank you so much for including that in this, I think the Board, I know I asked you the question, so I appreciate this, but could you speak to how the transportation has worked? Because from our parents from last year, that was one of the single greatest complaints beyond the fact that it's no longer in Fairfield, but I think the benefits of this program and that facility really speak very strongly for maintaining this connection, if you could just speak to the transportation, however?
What I can say about the transportation, and, you know, no fault of anybody's, you know, we work very closely with the Transportation Department. With the driver shortage, it's still, you know, students, as you know, they each, they start their day in three groups at three, three community gyms in Fairfield, and so they get there at 7:30, they're picked up around nine and transported to, to the campus of the University of Bridgeport. Due to the lower number in drivers or buses, you know, we don't have as many vans or as many buses to pick up kids, so it might take, normally from here, and I kid you not, I can get to the University of Bridgeport campus from this building within eight minutes. If I, just hop on 95, get off exit 27, take a right and drive till you can't drive anymore and you're there. So, the, the, the time takes longer sometimes than we would like, but it's not excessive or any different than it's been since we entered into COVID.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you, I just, I'll try to be quick. I just want to say about the CPP program, I'm glad to hear these updates. I was really encouraged by the tour that we took last year. It was so nice to have what seemed to be a very willing partner, and everything that I've heard about it so far has been, has been glowing, which, which I'm really very excited about. Tiny issue, pet peeve of mine, you misspelled Osborne Hill in the presentation, so just keep that in mind.
Can I tell you something? Every time I'm doing this, I've proved this a million times, because I did not want you to have to say that.
Actually, Jeff, we're just having staff put misspell Osborne Hill in various presentations to see if you can find it.
We're going to put a school in each presentation.
It's kind of like Go Fish, where's Waldo?
And Rob, don't take offense, because he comes after me for commas, so.
It's honest to God, I think of him every time I'm proofing these.
All right, well, I'm sorry about that, but nevertheless, as an Osborne Hill alum, on a more substantive note, ECC enrollment, there was actually a slide that we received in our Friday packet that somehow dropped out of this presentation for whatever reason. And I thought I must have made it up, but I went back to the Friday packet and I found it, that says the total enrollment between ECC Ward and Stratfield is listed as 157 students, and I had some questions about that number.
Yes, that's, that's correct, that should have been in the slide, and I apologize why it wasn't there, I don't know.
No, no, I mean, it was clearly there at some point, but it's not, it wasn't on here and it wasn't in our, in our printed packet. And, and I was also trying to add up the different classroom numbers and they didn't add up, but of course, you say on this slide in particular, there are kids that are morning and afternoon, and you count them twice for some things, and you, my basic question with this, this number seems a little bit low to me, relative to kind of some of the scary numbers that we have seen projected in past years. I mean, it's a big number, clearly, you need the two facilities. Are you seeing any trends in ECC enrollment that need to be called out to us?
Mrs. Bruno, do you want to come up and speak to that? What I would say to that 157, that doesn't include the 32 itinerant students, but.
And it's going to.
And it's going to grow, it's going to grow.
... enrollment. Yes, that's the kids who were currently enrolled, I think, the day that we pulled the number, so it doesn't include kids who have been placed but are in the registration process, they're not quite three yet, or they're within the days of implementation of the IEP. And again, we continue to evaluate and place kids throughout the year, so we've actually had to double up our screening process in January, because we had so many families call for screenings that we couldn't accommodate them all in a timely manner. So I do project that that number will continue to grow, as well as the class sizes.
Sure, and, and we've seen this year after year, kids turn three in April and, and they show up. So I just, I wanted to clarify that again, because the, the numbers didn't match what was in the presentation that everybody else saw. I may have some more questions about that, but I'll leave that for later. On a, on a broader note, I hear what you're saying about the single facility for ECC being a, being a desire of the staff, and we, we who are on the Board back in 2018 remember that very vividly. If we found a unified location for the ECC that had some additional space in it, are there any other programs, and I think I know what you're going to say about this, such as CLCs or the LA, that might be able to be co-housed in such a space?
Well, just like when we, at Giant Steps for Walter Fitzgerald, and we were considering potential other options for that area, depending on the available, the additional space availability in, in, you know, the location, you know, we would have those discussions.
But I mean, in general, you would like to have the CLCs be in, in a broader elementary school environment, let's say, rather than, rather than kind of on an island on their own.
Absolutely.
I should have asked the question that way first, but, right.
Yeah, I like the, the CLCs in, in, in the schools.
Okay. One, one last quick question about Walter Fitzgerald and tuition payments, because you've been with me in those Board of Finance meetings, they will ask what we're doing to attract more tuition-paying students to the program. Are we marketing at all, are we, do we have any, any leads?
Well, we, we do not have any leads right now, we have, you know, sent our brochure out to our, my colleagues in other districts, we've had open houses, we will continue to schedule those. Right now, we don't have any potentials.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions, but just kind of piggyback on that. When I'm looking at these numbers, and I see the ratios, I kind of cringe, because a few years ago, they were really bad, and they've gotten better, but some of these classrooms are still bad ratio-wise for peers, for typical peers and students with disabilities. So, and to Ms. Maxon Cannelly's point before, you know, a long time ago, this was not a problem. It was not a problem to get typical peers in the ECC, that was probably over a decade ago, I know, because I had one in school when we didn't charge tuition, and then I had another in school when we first started charging tuition as a typical peer. And I will tell you that since we started charging tuition, our typical peers have gone downhill. Now, I would be very interested to know from staff, if we stopped charging tuition and we went back to an interview process where the teachers got to interview typical peers to be appropriate for their students with disabilities, if that would, I'm, I'm assuming it would improve the ratios greatly. You wouldn't really need to advertise or make a flyer. Obviously, we wouldn't be collecting tuition, but to me, that would be a very, very easy solution to this problem. You know, looking at a PM classroom with, I mean, I don't know if that's a CLC zero to 100 ratio, a 20 to 80 ratio, 11 to 89 ratio, that's bad, and it's going to get worse. I think, when I'm looking at those numbers and I want to get the typical peers in, and I think about, I'm not surprised the staff still wants the one site, I remember what that program was, when the classrooms were about 12 kids, 13 kids by the end of the year. You're already in some of these classrooms at your capacity, and it's December, and I don't know if you know how many kids are in the queue from birth to three at the moment, and I know the screening process at the ECC, so I know how many are just going to come in from straight screenings from parents, or referrals from the local preschools of kids that need to be screened, so I'm sure that number, Mr. Peterson, will definitely get bigger by the end of the year, but I'm wondering, and I'd be curious to see what the staff would think about getting those, to get those typical peers into going back to an interview process, if we can get some staff who is here still, I'm sure there's, there's some still around, from when our kids were interviewed to when we went to tuition and we had to stop interviewing. One of my questions. Another question I have is about the CPP and Walter Fitzgerald. Is that still, do we have the same administrator for both programs?
Yes, Amanda oversees both.
So, with the significant increase from COVID at Walter Fitzgerald, and, and if I'm not mistaken, but I'm really pulling this from the top of my head just from years ago, the CPP numbers have grown as well.
Yes, but certainly not at, at the rate of WFC.
Right, so how are we doing between the complex needs of the both populations and the multiple locations having one administrator for both?
I'm a lot more involved in both those programs.
Because I would imagine that's a lot.
What I would say, between me and Amanda Kirik, right now, I think we're managing it.
Okay. Right now, okay.
I'm not one to like, if I felt it was not manageable, I would not be afraid to say so.
Okay.
I just want to add, we are in an assessment phase on that, that began yesterday and will continue indefinitely to try to get an understanding of the needs of, of supporting the program, because I was made aware that the program has doubled from previous years, and some concerns have been raised by staff.
And I'll just put on the radar, if Walter Fitzgerald, if, you know, the number continues to remain high, I don't know if there's plans or talks about nursing for the school.
We've talked about nursing, we've had conversations with, with Gil Mitchell, not since, you know, the year started, but it's something we could definitely have a conversation about.
Mr. McHussey, could you just tell us, what is, I know you said you don't have anything in the pipeline, but what would be the advertised tuition rate at the new facility, if someone were interested from out of town?
Well, currently, it's $35,000 for a base tuition, plus the cost of, you know, if a student gets IEP services, it would be the cost of services that we would calculate, similar to the, how we calculate services for our, you know, open choice students, and the, or, and if the student had a 504, we would do the same thing, calculate the cost of services they get, and add that to the $35,000 base.
And, and would, remind me, would that produce any revenue in the budget, or was that a straight cover costs?
No, that would be, that would be reflected as revenue in the budget.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
All right, I have a few questions, but I'm just going to ask the one that we, I'll email the, the rest. I don't disagree that we should be highlighting the cost savings, I just want to make sure that we are, like, we know any number we throw out there, we'll be, we'll receive a ton, as well it should, scrutiny, and the numbers that are in the presentation, I'm just wondering if those are gross or net, because that just assumes that, I'm assuming, if I heard you correctly, a 10-month tuition, but it's not, you know, including the cost of, well, then we wouldn't have a CLC, so we wouldn't have an additional maybe sped trainer, or we wouldn't have an additional sped teacher, or we wouldn't have the other related service staff. So, I mean, I just think that that number, and then we have to factor in the transportation, so I think just throwing out a tuition save is a good place to start, but I don't think that that's, do I think that those other costs are going to be net out a $27,000 save? Absolutely not, but I do think that that number should be a better representation of a true cost savings, if that makes sense.
What we did two or three years ago is we did the average outplace cost, which is that for, just for a CLC kid, it's about 132, 132,000, and then we did, you know, a cost out of what it costs to educate the student in district, and what the difference of those two numbers was, to indicate, you know, a savings between the two numbers, to, to say, or to try to cost out, like, I mean, if we didn't have CLCs in the, in the district, and for 134 students, this is what it would cost, on average, for 134 students, 132,500 times 134 equals, and if we didn't have that, what it would cost if we didn't have the staffing, because we don't have the programs.
Right, but like, again, I don't know what the back-of-the-envelope calculation that Mrs. Gerber was using, but if she was including, you know, Walter Fitzgerald in there, like, yes, that's $80,000 per 45 students, but we also wouldn't have a Walter Fitzgerald to maintain and run and do all that stuff, so there's, I just want to make sure before we throw a number out there that we can defend it, because you know it will receive a lot of scrutiny.
Let me just, if I could follow up, I mean, some of that, I hear what you're saying, some of it is a little bit easier, because Walter Fitzgerald in our budget book does actually have its own budget line, so you can literally calculate the variance, same with CPP has its own program, so does preschool, but some of the other pieces might be a little bit harder to break down, so a piece of that social worker, a piece of that, so, I hear what you're saying, but the, the big point is, there's the, there's the gross of cost avoidance minus the cost to operate equal net estimate, right? That's what we're looking for as a chart, something like that. Right, is that some?
All I was getting at was that the numbers that we have right now are gross.
Yes.
And I think we should be able to defend the net number.
Absolutely, totally agree. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Two quick things, one is a follow-up, I think that's a very good point, because we would get quite dinged on that, so I would just suggest that whatever page gets produced, if it could be run, if it's produced in time to be able to run past the Finance Committee at their next meeting, because I think they will have no problem saying, yes, yes, this won't work, yes, yes, you know, I just think that'd be a good idea. But my second question was just a quick follow-up to Mr. Peterson's point regarding if a single site were found for the ECC, or we, you know, we made that move. The key question is, is that, is there any program outlined in this entire thing where the program does not spend time? where the program does not spend time integrated in the regular ed classrooms? Because it would seem those would be the only ones that could move to an ECC solo site, assuming that the ECC is not put into an already existing elementary school which maintains some classrooms. So are any of the, like, for example, the regular CLCs you alluded to and the Early Literacy Academy, you alluded to each of those students also spends time with non-disabled peers in the regular ed classroom. Is there any program where that doesn't happen?
The only program that does not have, that's not in a general ed setting or a school is the CPP. So I mean.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Vitale?
Just for the record, could you just speak a little bit to our requirement to provide the least restrictive environment for our special education students? And, you know, striving for the amount of time they should be spending with their typical peers?
Time with non-disabled peers, like, the time that a student with disability spends with their non-disabled peers, that is a calculation that we are measured on by the state. We're required to educate students with disabilities in the least restricted environment to the maximum extent possible. So, you know, when we are, you know, evaluating students and determining students eligible or determine students eligible for special education, you start, like, we start with writing goals and objectives, identifying needs, and then, you know, writing an IEP and then determining, you know, what's the most appropriate setting. But, you know, your default is always the generalized setting first. And then based on the severity of a student's needs determines on how the amount of pullout support or, you know, placement is ultimately there. But really, your default is always to educate a student with his non-disabled peers in a generalized setting.
Thank you, Mr. McHussey.
Okay. I'm just going to, Mrs. Vitale, yes, but then I want to kind of wrap this up. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just a quick point to sort of piggyback on what Ms. Kelly said. There really is no way to defend or calculate the numbers completely. So if we're going back to calculate up, you did say in the presentation that these were based on day, therapeutic day placements. A lot of those numbers were substitutes for therapeutic day placements. It is just an estimate. And it's just an assumption sort of that most of those kids, that would be where they would go first. But it doesn't account for a residential program, which would be where they would go next, which would be double the cost, if not more than double that cost. So I just want to say in those, you know, he kind of went with the lower number for that day placement. But it could actually be much more than that as well.
It's still just going to be scrutinized.
Right. Exactly. I just think that point needs to be made.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McHussey. And I'm sure as we progress, you might have more questions either through budget or as we talk about facilities. So thank you very much for giving this presentation and all of the incredible work that you and our staff are doing for our youngest and eldest students in our district. So thank you. All right. Moving on. Moving on to 6A, approval of business curriculum and business curriculum resources. The recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the business curriculum and business curriculum resources as presented on 11/29/2022. Can I get a motion? Mrs. Vitale, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. I'll open it up to the floor for any questions or follow-up. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Thank you. And first to Dr. Zavjanzik, who's making his way up. Thank you so much for however that memo was put together capturing the changes to the curriculum. I found that incredibly helpful to read. Certainly spoke to the time that had been put into all of that revision work. So I, again, it was very helpful. I will simply say that. So I sincerely appreciate the effort that clearly went into that. So I'll just leave that there. I had a couple of questions regarding the business texts. Basically, that the ones that are being recommended, are they being recommended, all of them as new purchases? Or are some of them just a recommendation of what we are currently using? And this is indicating that that's continuing?
The latter of the two. It is, they are currently being used and we are writing them into the documents moving forward. So none of them will be new purchases unless, of course, we are purchasing more sets for classes and so forth.
Okay. Because otherwise, we're going to have to have some CPR and Mrs. Kelly down the end. But so we will be finding out then in January exactly how many are being asked for? And when will we be getting those numbers?
At the current point, we don't believe we need to purchase any based on what's in the bookroom. Of course, as you know, the high school requests will come in. And if there is a need to purchase new books, we will do it. But there's no class sets warranted at this point based on what we have.
We're using classroom, mostly classroom sets. So the need to purchase unless they're lost or misplaced is not anticipated.
And I don't know if anyone's ready to answer this. But we did have something in the budget last year for, in terms of gathering together all of this inventory and someone who was doing that, I don't suppose that proved to be helpful for this specific aspect of our curriculum or these were already, business was on top of this and had them all inventoried?
Sorry about that. Both high schools do have somebody who works in the bookroom who does inventory this. So the position last year has been working mostly with math and science at the elementary level as well as language arts currently, but can be repurposed. Right now, we feel we're in pretty good shape with what we have and what we need.
Thank you.
And if I could just say thank you for your comments earlier on. That was as a result of the Business Department and all the teachers getting together to be able to go through each document. So I thank them for that as well.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right. Back to the board on the motion. Oh, sorry. What? Oh, sorry. We take public comment on voting items too for those in the audience. So if anyone would like to come forward on the vote on the business curriculum, you can come forward now. All right. Back to the board. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gorman, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson and Mrs. Kelly. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of the 2023-2024 student calendar. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the 2023-2024 student calendar. Can I get a motion? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. And I will open it up to board members. Mr. Asa?
Yes. So I know there may be a few amendments proposed tonight, but I wanted to just put this out there first. So my amendment is going to be reflected in enclosure number two dated December 13, 2022, which is the administration recommended calendar, which is slightly different from what we saw at the last meeting. So with that, my motion is to amend the 2023-24 proposed school calendar to make the following changes as suggested by administration on draft enclosure dated 12/13/22. One, move the two early dismissal October conference days to 10/25 and 10/26. And the second item is to change the election day PD to read half-day PD, followed by half-day conferences for PK through eight and full-day PD for high school.
Sorry, is there a second? Mrs. Vitale? And opening up? Go ahead, Mr. Asa.
So I just wanted to give a little background on, you know, I had originally suggested the full-day PD day on election day be used for conferences to lessen the number of half-days and early releases on our families. There was constructive feedback from staff and others on how that may be difficult, especially at that time of year. The superintendent consulted with, you know, the teachers' union, gained some feedback, and does appear that there was support for this in October and November. Another concern was raised by one or two board members at the previous meeting about safety concerns about using the buildings on election day. So I just wanted to say that the Police Department and Lieutenant Weah was consulted and thoroughly went through this idea and this proposal. And we did get sign-off from them. The Police Department does not like school activities with children going on when the building is open to the public for obvious reasons. But since these are teacher-parent conferences and we don't have large numbers of children coming in for FPS-related activities, they were comfortable with this. So with that is where my motion derived from.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi. As far as I can tell, enclosure number two already reflects the motion that you're making. Am I correct?
Yes, but it differs from our first read.
Right. But on a process standpoint, aren't we voting on the thing that's in front of us right now?
You mean the one from October, I mean, from the 29th?
Well, you know, the motion in the agenda only says that the Board of Education approved the 2023-24 student calendar. So I'm assuming that we're voting on the thing that's already in front of us, not the thing that we saw as a draft.
Yes, this is being forward as an administration recommendation.
But do we need to amend it? That's what I'm saying. It's already here.
I was under the assumption we needed to amend it, but if that's not the case, I can withdraw.
I honestly, I have no idea. But it seems like.
Right.
So at the previous meeting, Mrs. Gerber raised, yeah, Mrs. Gerber raised the comment about, I think that at the next meeting, or somebody did, I apologize, it might not have been you, that we vote on what we saw as a first read. So this differs from that. So I'm completely comfortable removing my amendment if that's comfortable with the board. But that is why I made it.
I have no issue either way. I just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing and voting on the same thing. And there's no, and that we're clear to the public that the thing that's in front of us today is different than the draft that we saw at our previous meeting.
Yes. And his motion to reference the enclosure number two, December 13, 2022, would differentiate that from the 11/29. So.
But the motion is to change the draft enclosure dated 12/13/22.
So we're going to vote on the enclosure? Okay. Good. Any questions off the agenda?
We'll withdraw.
So I will withdraw the amendment.
Okay. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
But to the topic of this, through the chair to Mr. Testane, I was wondering if you could speak to March. And I had not thought of this previously and, you know, kind of a last-minute flurry of certain staff emails. But are you, could you explain how you are not concerned about being able to handle those elementary school conferences on the 20th and 21st? And I ask that wondering if it makes sense to move the 20th to the 19th? Because on the 19th, it comes with the expectation of a faculty meeting, which means a later dismissal, if you, I don't want to say staff gets dismissed, but the point being a longer workday is expected for staff. And is that something that you think would be helpful? Just hearing the point of that some staff members have raised?
That is a good point. We did have that discussion regarding the switch to add the half-day at election day. And to be honest with you, Mr. Smoller and I did not discuss, and I think that was our error around the March conferences. I am hopeful that by March, there is regular communication with parents and staff, that we're not waiting for a conference. However, you bring a good point that we could amend it where either the 21st is switched over to the 19th with the longer day to allow some more time because we do have an extra hour built in naturally, contractually into the schedule. So that could help relieve some of the anxiety that some folks have. However, it could impact, and I have Dr. Parrish here because she obviously has a big smile, and she has an answer to that.
Zekia Parrish, Deputy Superintendent. So we stayed away from Tuesdays because during the week of conferences, we do still have professional development on those Tuesdays. And so with the impending change to the literacy curriculum, we wanted to try to maintain that Tuesday faculty meeting that would take place on that day. So that was one of the reasons why that particular one was on a Thursday as opposed to on the Tuesday.
And I understand that and respect that. But I also know that staff can only do so much with so much time. And so, you know, I don't know if this is the kind of thing that staff can sit with and we can bring it back. I'm not looking to spring this on. I think people need to talk about this. But I just throw that out there that this might be worth another vote going forward if the idea has merit.
I think given some of the adjustments that we are making in terms of the ELA curriculum review process and planning, that we could sacrifice that March after-school PD if there is a recommendation to an amendment tonight so that we can get this calendar finalized.
I'm happy to make the amendment. I only, I'm happy to also say in January, can we pull this back up for another vote in February? I mean, I don't think anyone's making their plans for 2024 based on tonight's vote about March early release conferences. So I'm not looking to rush into this decision. But if it's something that staff is in favor of because they recognize that the math of this, if you do have a fifth-grade class with 25 students, getting all your conferences in in two days could be an unfair burden on some teachers, then great, we can go ahead with it tonight. But I'm not looking to rush into this.
I think going into it tonight is fine. We did gain the extra professional development day, half-day on a Tuesday on March 5 that did not exist in previous years. So more than happy to sacrifice the one hour, that other additional Tuesday, because we did gain professional development time on a full half-day with the hour on March 5.
So to this point, then, do you have a preference of Wednesday or Thursday? Dr. Parrish?
I would prefer if you moved the Wednesday simply because it looks like there's some conflicts with some of the F-days.
Okay. So then, if I may make a motion to move the March 20, 2024 early release to March 19, 2024.
Mrs. Vitale, seconded. Discussion by the board.
And I think I've already made my argument.
Ms. Gerber? Yeah. I'm just sorry. I'm just, I'm a little confused. And I admit, I was doing something, I admit on my own. But so what is the rationale behind? So you're saying that there will be an early dismissal and professional development and?
No, 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 no. Because Tuesdays, staff are already contractually required to stay an additional hour past dismissal for what would be a faculty meeting, that professional development time would be sacrificed to conference time so that staff literally has an extra hour to fit in all of the conferences in two days rather than three?
Not sure if an hour is really going to make a difference.
Well, an hour would be four conferences if you're doing them every, so if you've got 25 students in a class of fifth graders, that's four conferences in that hour.
Dr. Parrish?
It's actually 90 minutes, so that would provide additional time.
Mrs. Kelly?
I don't have anything in front of me, but can you ballpark how many classes we have that are actually at 25? I know we have some, but like, it's, can you?
I don't have that in front of me. I can get that to you.
Okay. Mr. Testane, or does anyone, I mean, it's not something we discussed previously. So is there any administrative concern or you're okay with that?
Again, I think I'm okay with it. Simply if it was the fall conferences, be a little different. I'm hoping that we have, and I'm sure that our teachers communicate regularly with our families throughout the year, that this is not going to be any major surprises at the March conferences.
Okay. I will take it to the board then, unless there's, oh, sorry. Any public comment on this change and just this amendment, in this amendment only, from Wednesday to Tuesday?
Bob Smoller, President of the FVA. First of all, I appreciate the amendment because mathematically, conference times of, really would end up being about eight minutes. I can't find a single teacher in the entire district who thinks that's enough. I can't find a single teacher in the entire district who thinks that's enough time to hold a meaningful parent teacher conference. It would have to be the Wednesday, because the Thursday is evening conferences. So you can't hold over the faculty until 5 o'clock, or, you know, is what it would be on a PD day, and then have them come back on the evening. So, you know, it would be the, the Wednesday that moved over, which would replace the day conferences, and then I guess the Thursday would be the evening conferences. So I would be much more in support of that than, than trying to play with the Thursday one. But we do need that, I mean, an hour and a half will be helpful, two hours is what's really needed to get these conferences in the spring, and they are fully subscribed from what I understand.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, not back to us yet. All right, anyone else from the public? All right, Ms. Teresa?
So just to be clear, the amendment on the table is mimicking what Mr. Smoller just commented, right? Moving the Wednesday to, okay, thank you.
Wednesday, the 20th would be a regular school day. All right, back to the board. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Guern, Mrs. Guernsey?
Great. I'd like to propose an amendment. I move that the Board of Education amend the 2023-2024 Fairfield Public Schools' student calendar to add April 10th, 2024, as a school holiday in recognition of Eid al Fitr, and to extend the school calendar by one day.
Mrs. Gerber? Seconds. Yep. Open it up to the board? Yes, oh, you want to give some comments, Chair? Go ahead.
There are several reasons I made this amendment. While I was deeply moved by the numerous emails and public comments from the Muslim community and their allies, they are not the sole drivers of my decision. Most critical to my decision-making is the data from our district that indicates a 42.9% increase in absenteeism on Eid al Fitr during the 2022 calendar year, a statistic that is attributable to the number of students that specify their absence from Fairfield Public Schools for religious observance on the Eid holiday. This is extremely concerning, considering our current challenges with absenteeism and our district's dedication to reducing chronic absenteeism. Knowing that hundreds of students are not able to receive instruction on the Eid holiday is problematic from an operational perspective. It may seem obvious, but you can't teach students that are missing from their seats. Lastly, I'll be voting to add the Eid holiday to our calendar, because I'm proud to live in a community that is dedicated to inclusivity, and I would like to see a school calendar that reflects this commitment.
Mrs. Kelly?
Hi. I didn't speak out about this the last time, and I just wanted to, to, to say a few things, because I did, I did wrestle a lot with this decision, because, you know, we are sensitive to the needs of everyone in our community. We get emails from everyone saying half-days, days off, especially if it's not a federal holiday, is very hard on our working families, and we have to be sensitive to that. I do understand the argument about appealing to the state, and I don't think your advocacy should stop here. I really don't. But especially, we talked about not having a policy, and in the absence of a policy, that gives us quite a window, I think. And when we're talking about, one of the, there's a lot of things about this job that are difficult, but one of the, the nicer things to me is being able to customize our policies and our curriculum, just like we're talking about getting a packaged curriculum from the state and Fairfielding it, you know, to, to meet the needs of our students and meet the needs of our community. I think we should extend that same philosophy to our calendar. So I think we need to be fluid with the needs of our community, and so I will be supporting your amendment.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to make very clear, obviously, I've been the one person who has really raised hesitations about this amendment, so I, I should speak to that more fully now, and why I will not be voting in favor of it. I'm not voting against it. I will be abstaining from this for the precise reason that Mrs. Kelly just said. We have no standard, and actually, I should also say, I do appreciate very much Mrs. Guernsey giving two specific points in favor of this amendment. I'm a bit, not, obviously, on the topic of religion, I'm a bit agnostic on the topic. I do agree with Mrs. Kelly. A calendar is a reflection of its community. We make all sorts of individual choices, and I have no skin in the game. I am not a teacher in the district, so this is not affecting my days off. I do not have students in the district that I'm having to be concerned about, or, you know, thinking, what do I want for them and their calendar? So this is not about this holiday itself at all. The reason for my abstention is the complete lack of board discussion regarding any standards, any criteria moving forward, because this is not the last decision of this nature that we are going to make. And so to make this one decision right now, which I think would make many, look, there's nothing I would like better than to make, you know, so many people happy who have so passionately and so articulately requested this day off. But in fact, what is the criteria for when we decide if we're going to add Indigenous Peoples' Day to the calendar? What is the criterion if we're going to add Diwali to the calendar? What is the criterion for if we're going to add Three Kings' Day to the calendar? What about Holi, adding that to the calendar? For our Orthodox Christian students who might be interested in Easter Monday to the calendar? What is the criterion for adding Juneteenth to the calendar? We have no basis for any discussion for that. And that right there, those are six days, which people could very legitimately request, and those six days added to the calendar in addition to this one holiday. I'm not the one who's having to go out to, they give me pause, and I don't understand it not giving pause to anybody on this board. And here's one thing that I will own as something I wish we had done. A policy committee has not taken this issue up proactively, and I wish we had. We didn't, and there's nothing I can do retroactively to, to amend that. But if this is going to be a board that just makes the decision because we were asked, then what's the point of any policy? Because we're doing it on the basis of no criterion, none that we've established, none that we've discussed, none that we agreed to. And so in terms of this calendar being a reflection of the community, according to whatever data I could find, not that we've established a percentage of population or a percentage of students being absent, data points that might have been of value in this conversation, the only data I could find regarding the population numbers is that approximately 1% to 2% of Fairfield's population is Muslim, approximately 1% of our population is Hindu, approximately 1% of our population is Orthodox Christian. Of interest, almost 23% of our population is religiously unaffiliated, meaning agnostic, atheist, or they don't know. And that's a population whom we are saying, you have to go find babysitters, you have to go be in the position possibly, due to snow days, of weighing what you're going to do with an April break, because we've added an extra day off, that there's no question that education in June is of less value. We are adding that into this. We are now pushing it a day later in terms of seniors who might now be missing an early orientation. All of those are reasons, and I'm not saying, and I want to be very, very clear, I'm not saying necessarily that any of those are reasons that should trump our district's pursuit of, of having this as a recognized holiday, but I do know that this board hasn't discussed any of that. And so with those days right there that I've mentioned, those are six days that if we're really talking about being inclusive, we shouldn't even be waiting for those members of our community to come forward and ask for this day off. Fairfield Public Schools put out a social media post just recognizing the work celebrating Diwali done at Tomlinson. I believe that was done about a week ago, which was a beautiful post to see. So we are already looking at, well, maybe that day should be added. Three Kings' Day, Holi, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Easter Monday, Juneteenth. Six days right there. If we're trying to be inclusive, it's inclusive of whom? Only the people who are here in the room? How is that inclusive? That's inclusive of people who come and ask us for something. So then what, we're now going to enjoy, going to ignore those who are silent, those maybe who don't feel comfortable? Because it can be uncomfortable. After all, we've already been called Islamophobic if we don't support this amendment. And so I just want to be very, very clear. I have no animosity for the holiday. If this is what ends up being passed, okay, I'm, this is not something that I'm opposed to. I'm opposed to our moving forward with no policy, no criterion, with several other holidays right behind this, that we are then in what position besides precedent to just say yes? Because the one thing, and I do appreciate, Mr. Testane, you circulating the memo regarding the, the legal background behind this position, the one thing that was very clear is that we, as an agency, have to be neutral about this. Well, if we have to be neutral, then what religious holiday out there are we in a position to justifiably ignore? That's a discussion we have not had.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Max and, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. I'll just say at the outset, I will be supporting this amendment, but I also want to say that I, I understand very much the, the position that Ms. Cannelly is, is taking. And she and I have spoken about this, and, and, you know, I, this is also a decision that I've wrestled with, and I, I've come around to this decision from an initial point of skepticism. I have no problem as a board making some decisions on a case-by-case basis, and I think we are not making a decision just because we've been asked. I think a lot of us have spent a lot of time considering this very deeply, listening to the community, and the fact that a, a community came to our board and made a request, I think is not something that we should, you know, cast aside. Not all ideas that we need to consider must come directly from us or from administration. Good ideas can come from the community, and we will debate them as, as we will at this, at this board table. So I, I have no issue with the way this has come about, and I, I would say, you know, I'd throw it back to Ms. Cannelly, if, if, if this is a thing that we want to have a policy about, I'm, I am happy to do that. I don't know that we need to have a policy before we make the decision. And I don't know that because we're choosing to do one thing, that we need to either recognize every holiday or no holidays. So I, again, I'm perfectly comfortable with the way this has come about. I do recognize that it's in, that it's, you know, we're adding some issue for people who, you know, may need to get childcare. That's, that's an issue every time we, we, we address this. You know, I think this is not quite as easy a decision as many in the public have, have thought it, it might be, but, you know, the preponderance of the evidence for me leads me to support this, this amendment. And again, I have no, no particular issue making these decisions on a case-by-case basis.
Ms. Teresa?
Thank you, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, and Mr. Peterson. I, I tend to agree with both individuals here on, on certain points, probably more so with Mrs. Max and Cannelly. I, I do believe that this is something we need to look at, because I do believe there will be other instances like this that are going to come before us. That being said, that will not be enough tonight to persuade me to vote against this. So I will support it, but I do it with cautious optimism that we can better prepare ourselves for future requests, not just on calendars, but other items that this has raised, you know, our procedural process with.
Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. I'm really going to echo a lot of what Ms. Kelly and Mr. Peterson said, although I do understand the process that Ms. Max and Cannelly was talking about needing a process. To me, this was also something that I thought a lot about, struggled with, kind of went back and forth. When we got the numbers on the holidays, this was not an insignificant number of student absences called in for religious reasons on that day comparatively to the other holidays that were previously cited tonight. I mean, there was like a handful of students, and then there was almost 250, those of whom at the time calling in didn't necessarily all know that it would be counted for something, so I'm not sure how many students were actually absent for the holiday that didn't call it in as a religious holiday on top of that. So that makes this easier for me. I will be supporting this amendment. I do appreciate the families and the children who came out to speak. I thank them for the invitation to meet at the community center and get an opportunity to listen and learn about the holiday. And I think Mrs. Kelly is right, that we do take the opportunity to Fairfield this, and to me, it's just the right thing to do.
Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. I will also be supporting Ms. Guernsey's motion. Thank you for making it. You know, I really agree with the comments of, you know, pretty much all of our other board members, including Mrs. Max and Cannelly. This board may recall that I, I requested the policy committee look at our calendar when we were faced with a similar decision about high school graduation being held on a Friday. At that particular time, the policy committee did not take any action. I did not take this decision lightly in terms of, you know, how to approach this. When the calendar first came before this board, I was the chair. I had the ability to tell Mr. Testane, put the calendar, put this holiday on the calendar, let's not have a board debate on it. I did not do that. I wanted him to put forward a calendar that was as secular as possible. I appreciate him and do not fault him for not adding the holiday, and I don't think anybody else should as well, you know, taking a very neutral approach to this. It is, you know, we as a board, our role is to listen to our community, to get feedback, and to make the best decision that we can based on that information. And we all may be approaching it from a different, you know, a different set of values, a different set of priorities, and that is our right to do so. The numbers, really, I did look at, tried to be as, you know, non-emotional as possible, and I did request the number of students who took days off for the various holidays that were discussed, and, you know, a couple hundred students that we know of, being absent was not insignificant. So tried to stay neutral. So I agree with Ms. Guernsey's initial comments on that. And I, you know, I thank the community for coming out and being so respectful in your comments. I thank you for, again, for the invitation to meet with you and to learn about the holiday, and for allowing me the opportunity to just broaden my own knowledge on this, and look forward to continuing conversations with your community and others that come before us. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Just a final comment, and I do appreciate the respectful conversation here at the board table as well, so that while I have my view and my discomfort level with this, you know, I appreciate the perspective that all of you bring to this, and look forward to what's going to be many more conversations on this topic of our school calendar with what this has opened our, many of our, all of our eyes to as an issue, and look forward to the conversations going forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll just speak briefly to this. I thought about this a lot as well. I, again, also thank the community for coming out. I've stated before that I do hope that we have these conversations, because I agree that we need to, not just the religious holidays, but just the calendar in general as a whole, including of all the other days we take off and how we're doing professional development, and I welcome the input of our new superintendent as he takes a fresh look at how we structure our, our year and our day. So just inclusive of that, that policy, I would be supportive of, of looking at that in general as well. Since we don't have that, I will support this this evening. Since we don't have that, I will support this this evening for that reason and others. But I have expressed to the board that I have certain points in terms of our start and end dates for other segments of our population that have concerns around those. But for this, I will support this this evening. But I do look forward to having the conversations with everyone going forward. Thank you very much. All right. And with that, I will take it to the public for any public comment on this amendment to the student calendar and this amendment only. Oh, sure. Come on. Just when you come up, press the microphone button and your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Asad Anwar. I live at 60 Homeland Street, Fairfield. Have three kids in the Fairfield School System. This is more of a clerical thing. I didn't quite catch the date when you're applying to, you know, give the holiday for 2023.
It's for 2024.
2024, yeah.
April 10th?
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all.
Oh, sorry. And we don't normally ask questions, but.
Yeah.
Was there a public comment?
No, that's a thank you.
Sorry. Anyone else? No? Okay, then back to the board on the amendment. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Kelly? All against? And abstentions? Mrs. Maxum Cannelly. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Mrs. Gerber?
Okay. I have one additional amendment to the calendar. I had put it at everyone's place. It's Jessica Gerber Calendar Amendment 121322. It's in two parts. I did it in two parts because I wasn't sure how this previous vote was going to go. So since the motion to approve Eid as a holiday has passed, if you could go to the second paragraph, my amendment is that the Board of Education amend the recommended 2324 Fairfield Public Schools student calendar by holding August staff PD days on the 28th, 29th, and 30th, holding sixth and ninth grade orientation on Wednesday, August 30th, holding the first day of school on Thursday, August 31st, and extending the last day of school to Thursday, June 13th, and that Wednesday, June 19th be marked as a potential day off from school Juneteenth, should the school year be extended then due to snow days. The board additionally moves to amend the language regarding snow days to change it to read the first five snow days as opposed to the first six snow days. And so that's my amendment, and I'm moving it. I don't know if the.
Mrs. Vitale, second.
Yeah, so I, just really quickly, because I know the hour is going late, I know we made the decision to move the days one day out so that the orientation would be, you know, you wouldn't lose that weekend. And I just feel that that means that our teachers still are losing that weekend, and many of our teachers are also parents in this town. And I just thought it would be nice to give them that opportunity, also aware of the fact that lately, and this is totally anecdotal, and I'm sure I'm jinxing it by saying this, but it has tended to be much hotter at the beginning of the school year as opposed to the end of the school year lately. And knowing how we still have many classrooms that are un-air-conditioned, I just thought it would be better to move it out a little bit. And still, as I pointed out in our previous meeting, right now, the last day of school would be the 11th of June with the addition of Eid. That's still quite early. And so that is my rationale behind this motion.
Mr. Asa?
I think I mentioned in the last meeting, I will not support this motion. I can't support adding those days to the end of the year. I do understand that the potential for heat early on in the beginning of the year is there. We do have the ability to mitigate that with early dismissals if needed at the discretion of the superintendent. So I will not support this.
Just to point out, I am not moving, we're not creating extra days. I'm simply shifting them. So we're not adding additional days.
So let me clarify. I do not support extending the school year, not adding days, but I don't support extending the school year that deep into June with the potential for snow days.
Anyone else? Mrs. Vitale?
I will be supporting this motion, really for all the reasons Mrs. Gerber said. I think just, you know, for years, we started on Thursday, just for a nod for our teachers to have, you know, that week before, to spend time with their families for vacation. I also, you know, met with a couple PTAs and heard from some parents that expressed just concerns in how tough that first week of school was for special or elementary school students. I am concerned about the heat in the buildings. While I hear, Mr. Asa, your point about being able to mitigate that with an early dismissal, I think it's easier to add an early dismissal at the end of the year than in the first week of school, just adding more disruption. So I will be supporting it. Thank you for making the motion, Mrs. Gerber.
Mrs. Gerber, can I just ask a clarification? With both parts of your amendment and changing the snow days, and knowing that we added Eid at this point, what would be the absolute last day of the school day here?
The 21st of June.
Okay. So the 21st of June. Thank you. That's what I thought, too. So the only, I have concerns on another reason, and it's on the tail end. And I've raised before concerns about graduation and just how this would work if 19th became a holiday, and then the 20th was graduation, or if we had the other school days, and then we're back to a Friday graduation, which we know has been problematic in the past. So just didn't know if you had any thoughts on how that 19, 20, 21 might play out if we get those snow days with our head principals or whatnot.
Well, just, I mean, again, anecdotally, we have had the last day be a Friday and had a graduation on a Thursday for the high school, so we would still be able to do that should we have had, if we had five snow days, that would be, it wouldn't be much different than other years. It would just mean that we'd have that one day off, the 19th. I totally understand is not convenient, but that said, it is a state and federal holiday, so I did want to recognize that. And perhaps if Mr. Testane is very conservative with his snow days, it won't be an issue. Or if it's just really warm, I don't know.
A lot of pressure.
Yeah, sorry.
The high schoolers left, so you're.
Yeah. So I guess that was my just idea behind it. I certainly wouldn't want to go any further past the 21st, which is why I suggested changing it from six days to five days, snow days. I don't believe we've had more than, and I know I'm probably jinxing it again, than five snow days. But, so that was just my rationale behind it. Again, it really has to do with the beginning of the school year. I mean, I'm not adding any days, I'm simply shifting them. You know, I'm very sympathetic to those who have children or work in un-air-conditioned buildings. Those buildings can be horrific in August. So, and I just like the idea of giving our staff the same benefits that we're giving our students, but giving them that last weekend of vacation and summer.
I understand that, Pacey, on the other end. And if I ask the head principals about the end, if Mr. Cavanna and Mr. Hatzis wouldn't mind coming up, because I just do have concerns about 19, 20, 21. Doctor Hatzis, I'm sorry. I'm going to get the names right.
So, go ahead. What's the question?
Yeah. So my question is, with Mrs. Gerber's amendment, what would end up possibly happening on paper? Is that the 19th would be a holiday? We could end up having the last day of school either be the 20th, which means possibly looking at graduation the day after a holiday, how that would play out for you? Or we end up with a Friday last day, which we've already been down the road with a Friday graduation? So reverting back to not having it on the last day of school? So just how that feels to the both of you?
Yes. So Greg Hatzis, headmaster, head principal, Fairfield Low School. As Ms. Gerber said, there have been a number of occasions over the last decade or so where we've had graduate, the last day on a Friday and a graduation on the Thursday evening before, mainly to recognize and honor the Jewish Sabbath on Friday night. But also, we tend to find that having the graduation on the last day is the ideal situation, especially for families that might have students that have to go to school the next day, younger siblings that have to school the next day, and this way they don't have to worry about that. But having it just one day before is doable, because for at least the high schoolers, it tends to be a review day, so it's a wrap-up day. There aren't as many issues with students the next day. If they have younger siblings that do, like in middle school or elementary school, there might be, you know, they still have to go to school the next day. If it fell on the Thursday, the last day of school, then it is, I guess we would probably look for guidance from superintendent, from the state of whether it would, you know, what would be the optics of having graduation on the Wednesday night of Juneteenth? And if that wasn't something that we would want to pursue, then we would do it on the Tuesday before.
So it would be the same situation if we graduated on Thursday, the 20th, if the last day was the 21st, than if we graduated on the 18th, if the last day was the 20th? Because you're saying that the 19th would be observed as a holiday. So the day before the last day of school would then in essence be Tuesday, not Wednesday. So to your point, it would work out that way.
Can I just clarify? The motion does not indicate definitively that Juneteenth is a holiday. It says possibly. So this motion does not stipulate that definitively.
It's if we have, if we get enough snow days to get us to there, it would be a holiday. Yes, it does. That's what the motion is.
I was misreading it as a potential day off, as in a decision yet to be had.
No, potential day off.
All right, so I was just reading it differently. Thank you.
Yeah. So that's why I'm asking the question around these days. So no one has any concerns about 19, 20, 21?
Yeah, I think that actually in memory, as I just said, I think that we would do the graduation, if the last day was the 19th, we would have graduation that night. And that way, no, if it was, if it was the Thursday, if it was the last, sorry, not the 19th, the 20th, yes, Thursday, the 20th, we would still have graduation that evening. That would be a discussion we could have with our students and families, just to see how that worked. Both high schools tended to always have an award ceremony the evening before graduation, the idea being that if there's family in from out of town, they would be able to attend both the award ceremony and the graduation. So separating those by a night, you know, that'd be something that we might have to look at if that was the case, if Wednesday was off. But those would be some of the things that we would just have to hash out. But I still think any of that is doable.
Thank you very much. Mr. Asa?
Yeah, I'm also struggling with the rationale on educational value here, because if the last day of school is the 21st, then you're going to have no school on the 19th, and a half a day on the 20th and the 21st. So you're going to, you're going to have school Monday, Tuesday, then you have a day off, and then they come back for two half-days. So to Mrs. Maxum Cannelly's point in the previous, in a previous motion or discussion, I don't understand how these days have any value educationally at the end of the year. The kids are checked out. Whereas if we're there in the beginning of the year, I think it's a lot different.
If you can be in an air-conditioned classroom when it's 90 degrees out at the beginning of the year, I mean, there is that.
Understood, but at the end of the year, it's a given. So at the beginning of the year, there's a chance that it's not 90 degrees on August 29th, but at the end of the year, it's just, to me, it's just wasted days.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Mrs. Guernsey. Sorry.
Just quickly, wanted to say that I would support this amendment for the reasons previously described, and especially in response to the feedback we've gotten from families and teachers about their earlier start dates earlier in the week. It's just been really difficult for the young kids, so just want to be responsive to that.
Of course, Mr. Testane?
Whichever way the board decides, obviously, we will implement. I just want to be very clear, because I know you made a great point that you thought it would be great for teachers and staff to have that time and that extra time with their families. I hope they're all listening so that if we do have to take a day away from April vacation, they understand that they got their extra time the weekend before or the week before, and that travel plans will need to be altered, and they will be expected to be at work. Because that is going to be then the next issue, that someone's going to say, I'm going to lose all this money because I have to change my travel and it's non-refundable, and that's going to be problematic by making the 21st the hard date stop when the state allows us to go a little further. But I'm okay with that, as long as people are listening and they understand that. The decision was made to give them at the front end, and there's a potential that it gets taken away at a time that a lot of people travel. And I hope families understand then that the expectation is that we start school on a Thursday and not on September 5th, Tuesday after Labor Day as well.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, just curious, and then thank you, Mr. Testane, for that. And I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe to you and Dr. Parrish to see which would be supported by the administration with the most educational value, if that can be answered. If not, tell me.
I mean, the most educational value is starting on August 28th or 29th. That would give you the most educational value, but that's not something that the amendment allows for. So, again, my concern only would be that starting full day, first day, the 31st, that we are going to have many students reporting on September 5th. Just, but, I mean, we can look at the data there on the absences if we pass it for next school year, and that may be then something that shows us that either we didn't predict properly, or, you know, pleasantly surprised that attendance is very good on those two days.
Oh, okay. Just, I mean, anecdotally, Mrs. Gerber or Mrs. Maxum Cannelly, do you recall there ever being an issue with just kids not start, coming to school until the Monday when we used to start on a Thursday? That being raised by past superintendents as a concern for changing, a recommendation to change the calendar? Because this recommendation to change the Monday did not come from administration when we made this change.
I mean, I'll just, sure, Mrs. Jacobson, if I can jump in? It's, my recollection of this, there had been a few efforts to move it back sooner, and it was solely coming from the point of taking advantage more of this time. I know I had resisted losing that last weekend, to Mrs. Gerber's point, a few times batted it back. I will say, I did appreciate that this calendar before us already at least moved one day so that the students weren't losing that last weekend, and I do appreciate that administration was sensitive to that. But no, I, to answer your question, no, I don't recall that ever being something that was talked about, that students just didn't bother to show up until the Tuesday after Labor Day.
And I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I'm just counting on your institutional knowledge, so thank you for that.
Gerber? I don't recall it either, at any point, my kids being in school and me being on the board.
Anyone else? Mr. Asa?
Just to that point, the move to the Monday start came from our previous superintendent. You're nodding your head no. Do you have, do you have a reason for that? Because I remember being in discussions with him and him talking about.
I think that Mr.
The value of the Monday start.
That was not raised by administration at that time. That was raised by board leadership, that we made that change, and he supported the change that we recommended at that time.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Anyone else have any further questions? If not, I will take it to the public. Does anyone have any public comment on this amendment and this amendment only?
Hi, Annie Berkowitz, 58 North Cedar Road. I just want to thank you for making this amendment, Mrs. Gerber. I'm a parent of two young elementary school students, and I can say, you know, from my perspective and the perspective of a lot of my friends, it's very, very challenging for the young ones, especially after COVID, to, you know, get back into the full swing of things for a first week of school, very taxing on the families, extremely taxing and unfair to those teachers who have to put up with the temperatures in the air, on air-conditioned classrooms, of which we know there are many. I got several emails during that first week saying, my thermometer on my window is reading 90 degrees. It doesn't happen in June, at least it hasn't in my limited experience of being an elementary school mom. So I'd just like to thank you all for considering the change from Monday to Thursday. So I'd just like to thank you all for considering the change from Monday to Thursday.
Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I'm also an elementary school parent. My three children attend North Stratfield School, and I can say that this return to the year was incredibly painful. We had anecdotal reports of many children falling ill, one of whom was my, well, this isn't, excuse me, this isn't anecdotal, one of my children got sick. So I very much appreciate the amendment, and I think, until our facilities are prepared, I think we need to be ready to address the growing climate in August, not just in June. So thank you.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Just one, I, I am entirely sympathetic to the amendment. I just want to explain that I'll be abstaining again, due to, I want to be consistent with my earlier vote, and until we have that discussion about Juneteenth, I'm not comfortable voting on anything that's definitively putting that in the calendar. So it is not due to my, any more than I was opposed to adding Eid to the calendar. I just wanted to explain my vote here.
Okay, anyone else? All right, back to the board, all in favor of the motion? Sorry. I'm, I'm like, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly. Abstentions, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, motion fails. Okay. I think there was one more? Oh, no, that was it, okay. Okay, so now we are back to the main motion. Approval of the 2023 student calendar as amended. Any further comments or questions? No? All right, I'll take it to the public. Any comment on the calendar as amended? Back to the board, all in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly, motion passes 9-0. Okay, next item, approval of the 2023 Fairfield Cares survey. Did send in amendment? So I'm going to go first. So I am going to make a motion to amend the 2023 Fairfield survey in accordance with the survey amendment submitted by Fairfield Cares. I did put the motion on the table, so can I get a second? Yeah, I said, a motion to approve the fair, of the 2023 Fairfield Cares survey. Mrs. Guernsey, seconded. Mrs. Vitale. I submitted a motion to amend, sorry, here, sorry. Motion to amend the 2023 Fairfield Cares survey in accordance with the survey amendment submitted by Fairfield Cares, and I can explain if I get a second? Oh, Mrs. Guernsey, thank you. So as every, the board members received an amendment from Fairfield Cares recommendation, I am putting forth this motion in accordance with what they have submitted to us as an amendment, with an introductory amendment and some of the questions. I'm going to allow Mr. Testani to give some comments on this, and invite Fairfield Cares' Kathy Hazlitt up to walk us through some of the amendments that they proposed, and with that, we will go into discussion with the board. So Mr. Testani, do you want to open us up on this?
Sure. I know many of the folks had left for the evening, but I think, you know, our goal here in the Fairfield Public Schools needs to really foster a supportive and inclusive environment for all our students. I think, just like most communities, we need to do a better job, and I, I know the staff and everyone here at the board table, and everybody in this room, would say that we were working towards being better. In terms of the amended questions, question 15 has been amended, and it is even, I would say, a little bit of different than what was approved as question number three in the past. So I, I think any issues that may have been had in, in the current, since it was, many of the language has been amended and taken out of even what was approved in the previous two surveys that went out to, to children, and families had the option of opting out. Some language, which was then added to question 16, has now been completely deleted, and again, question 17 has been amended very simply, and it does eliminate language that has been used in the past as well. So I think folks that did express concern should no longer have any concerns around this being administered in the schools. I would like to hopefully think that we could get to a point, at some point, not just here in Fairfield, but in everywhere, where these questions aren't necessary to be asked, even on job applications. I, I think we're a long way from that, but I think that's the direction I would hope that we could eventually get to, where these are not the types of questions that need to be asked of anyone outside of the credentials that you're asking for, for, for an employer, or things of that nature. So at that, I think we're in a much better place today, hopefully, and to gather the data necessary, that I know our Fairfield Cares folks is, is critical to their work, to be able to provide us as a school district, some more information as to where some of our blind spots are, and where we need to amp up and ramp up our efforts to support our children in our schools. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy, thank you for joining us. I'll open up to the board for questions, comments, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, hi, thank you for this. So just to be clear, can you explain exactly what led you to make these changes? Because I have surveys going back from 2014, 2016, 2018, 2020. And the language that was approved by this board unanimously in 2020 was much different than the language that you are now proposing in this amendment, and the language that was used in 2018, that was approved unanimously by the board, 2016, approved unanimously by the board, 2014, all very different from what you are now proposing. So could you just explain exactly what led you to make these changes from surveys that were approved unanimously by previous boards, including this one?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gerber, for the opportunity to speak, and thank you, board members, for considering this amendment. We listened to the concerns of the comments of the November 29th board meeting, and then also conferred with a small group of folks who, by and large, are allies of LGBTQ students, as well as our evaluation consultant. And our focus with this 2023 survey, you'll notice that it's probably the shortest survey that we've ever done with students, and, and that is purposeful. Every data point on this survey will be used. And so we really took a hard look at those demographic questions. As I said, we took in consideration the comments of the previous board meeting, and we thought, you know, we can do better. Let's, let's take a look at those three demographic questions, and so we aligned that gender identification question with essentially the same wording that you find on Infinite Campus. So that's already in alignment with what is used in, in school, for, for school purposes. And then when we looked at the transgender question, we all kind of looked at each other and said, why are we even pulling out the transgender folks individually, isolating from all the other LGBTQ members of the community? That just doesn't make sense. We're not going to do anything separate, those data points would be so small. What we're interested in is looking at the full population of LGBTQ students. So that's the reason why we, we just deleted the, the transgender. That was historically asked, you're, you're absolutely right. But we're looking at this from a very pragmatic perspective. How are we going to use the data? And then, so we then, then, recognizing that the sexual orientation questions, again, we, it doesn't matter to us who's identifying on the super-specific, we're looking at wanting to know the full LGBTQ population. So again, it's, it's purely from a pragmatic perspective, and we think this does a really good job of capturing the data that will actually be used, and that will provide the snapshot of our student population.
Thanks, you. So I guess my question would be then, you know, seeing as, in previous years, you had very specific questions, you did reference specific groups, you, you did not feel that the information that you got from those questions was valuable?
I think we're in a different time. Quite frankly, I wasn't involved back then, so I'm now looking at it moving forward. So I'm looking at the Search Institute surveys that we had used in the past, there wasn't a whole lot of change, you're absolutely right, from year to year. But I think moving forward, we're no longer using the Search Institute survey, this is a, a survey that's coming from a, a bank of questions that a group of coalitions in our region will be using, and we hope that coalitions throughout the state will be using, so that we can now compare our local data with a larger population of data.
Thank you. Mrs. Vitale?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that a comment was made that, that our transgender students were facing some additional challenges potentially from LGBTQ, and that there was actually a value in further breaking down that subgroup of, of children, of students to, you know, quantify their needs, especially since we've asked the question for the better part of a decade. I'm concerned about losing that longitudinal data and valuable information on how we can best serve this population of students. Especially, I'm, I'm really, I have to admit that I was surprised by the conversation that happened at this board table last, at our last meeting, based on the support, unanimous support, that the survey has been, been given, and our dedication to providing support for all students, and appreciating that, you know, heard many people at this table say that they're data-wongs and data-driven, and I would think that wanting to get less data would not be something that we would want, especially since we know that this information has been used by Fairfield Cares, it's been used by our school district, it's been used by our PTAs, to really provide valuable programming for our students and for our families to help build assets. And how rewarding it is to be able to look through, look at that data from year to year, and saying, well, we did this, and now here where we, here's where we are. And, you know, I'm, my first inclination is not to support this amendment, but I'm, I appreciate how important this survey is. So I'm still, I want to hear more from you, and from, you know, where my fellow board members are on this.
Yeah, thank you very much. No, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and it was really from the LGBT allies that convinced us that this was really the way to go. Now, having said that, however, the intent is to do focus groups and go deeper into the LGBTQ issues. So while the opportunity is to get, collect data for the full LGBTQ population, and we've held one focus group so far, I'm hoping to do more, and from that focus group, we did learn that while there is better understanding of gay and lesbian, the school staff, community has work to do for transgender individuals. So that is something that's been recognized. So I think that we'll, we will continue to collect that data, and it'll give us an opportunity to, to dive deeper into each individual area, yeah.
And thank you. And I know that there was concerns expressed about asking the questions, especially at the middle school level, but just anecdotally, I mean, my, my children had friends who were transgender and were appreciated in the middle school years, going through puberty. And I think that providing, acknowledging that, recognizing that, that this isn't just a question, these are their friends that they are, they're worth every day. So anything that we can do to help provide support for, you know, both those students, and, as well as everyone in the school community, I appreciate the effort for that, so thank you.
We absolutely agree with that, and, and we would hope that these questions would be asked of both middle school and high school students.
Mr. Peterson, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did, thank you. Given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to be quick. I just wanted to signal that I will be voting in favor of this amendment. I do appreciate the language changes, and I would also point out that the amendment does contain a strengthened statement about parents' right to opt-out. So a vote against the amendment would also need to take that into consideration. You know, and I would also say, you know, one of the things that I was struggling with in the beginning, and I try not to make snap judgments on things like this that are important, I understand that, that we are dealing with a survey that's come before us many times. The thing that has changed in the interim is the guidance that was issued to staff over the summer on LGBTQ issues. And I was concerned primarily whether these questions were in conflict with the guidance that we had just issued. A close reading of both the survey and, and the guidance, I, I think they are not in conflict, which is why, one of the reasons that I'm, I'm far more comfortable now doing this. But I think that we need to be aware, as we deal with these issues moving forward, that a policy may ultimately need to be crafted to be more concrete than the guidance that was issued, but that's a thought for the future.
Just in terms of the opt-out, just for clarification, that parents can opt-out of this survey, and that communication would be going out, Mr. Testani, prior to, if the survey is approved by this board and is administered, the parents would know when it was being given, and they would have the ability to opt-out.
Yes, we'll be very clear to all our families about the survey and the option to opt-out when the time, if the time is, is, is coming.
Mrs. Guernsey? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just wanted to follow up on that. So, and just to be clear, that has happened in the past, that notification has gone out to parents prior to the survey. I mean, that is not this, something new that's happened. That has happened in previous years each time. So we're continuing to do what we've done in the past, which is allow families to opt-out. So that hasn't changed.
Guernsey?
Thank you, and thank you to Fairfield Cares. I am so grateful for the work that you do within our community, serving our students and families, and there's nothing I want more than for the survey to pass, because it is so critical to the, the work you do to serve our students. So that being said, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with the amendment. I don't like you losing that longitudinal data. I've received comments from the LGBTQ community that are in conflict with what you've presented here, so I just, I, I really am uncomfortable with it. But not wanting to jeopardize this survey from passing, I could see myself supporting it with great hesitation. Thank you.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Thank you. One question that I asked last meeting, and didn't really feel that I got an adequate answer to, or much of any answer, and I'm, I would like, because I have been asked by members of the public about it, and I thought it was fair to come back to this, because I think it's important that everyone is aware of how this is being used. And so I was hoping you could speak to, you know, the most recent history, with the last survey that was done, how in fact did it shape the actions, the programs, et cetera, of Fairfield Cares?
Well, I could definitely give you a laundry list of all the initiatives we've done since our 2021 survey.
Let, let me pause you, because I, just out of curiosity, I actually went onto your Facebook page just to see, and again, it is a wonderful list that serves our community very well. What I'm specifically interested in is how did it change what you might have had planned? In other words, In other words, Fairfield Cares may have been doing a series of programs, a series of speakers, a series of outreach, educational programs, and that, based on the results of the survey, you adapted, you recognized a need, for example. Or maybe it simply reaffirmed what you were doing, and so there were no changes whatsoever.
Well, I will say this, I mean, from our 2021 survey, we had thirteen, little more than 1,300, 7th through 12th grade respondents. Of that, 13% identified as LGBTQ. That was pretty significant, and so from that survey, we then reached out to the faculty advisors of the GSAs at the high schools to help us develop focus group questions so that we could go on. So, that would be one perfect example of how we've used that survey data. We've known, and it continues to show, that underage drinking is the number-one substance that's being misused by teens. So, we have continued to do work around educating around underage drinking, the social host law, et cetera. Marijuana has recently become legalized, so we have done a lot of education around the marijuana, the impacts of marijuana on the teen brain, et cetera. Vaping, now the kids are back in school full-time, we've done a lot of education around vaping. So, I would also say that we have developed work groups also as a result of our Drug-Free Communities grant. So, we now have some significant funding to address underage drinking, marijuana use, and vaping, so, yeah.
And what shouldn't be lost in this is that you also had a host of other data. I don't remember if it was the 2021 results or the one that preceded that, I was looking at all of them on the town website just to refresh my memory on it, but you had some really, I'm going to say interesting, because I don't want to put it in a positive or negative light, but data regarding our students with identified, with IEPs, and their use, and the use of, across racial grounds, across racial lines. And I was wondering if you could explain at all how that data has been used?
Yeah, I would say our focus, so it was, it was the first time that we've been able, using the 2021 data, to break it down. And so, I did make presentations to the SEPTA PTAs, so that they saw that the SEPTA kids are slightly higher at risk than their peer group. We've not, at this point, done anything based on ethnic background, the data points were actually pretty small with that, but it's something that we're going to continue to look at as we move forward. So, we have been doing things more universally, but also really wanting to focus on the LGBTQ, because that was the population that really stood out.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
Sorry, just two quick questions. One, and this could be, just be total brain fry on my part right now, but you mentioned you had 1,300 respondents last time. Did I make up the number 700? Did I make up that you, nothing about 700, I have the number 700 in my head, so how many, how many do we send out? Like, literally, I just can't, how many surveys? Do you have that number in your head? I don't know why I thought we were only sending it out to 700 students.
Our goal in 2021, which we did not make, was to try to achieve 400 respondents per grade, and we're hoping to do that in 2023.
Okay, that makes more sense. And then, just on your response to Ms. Max and Cannelly about the undoubtedly wonderful programs as far as vaping and marijuana legalization and all that stuff, I have to believe all those programs are happening regardless of whether or not this survey takes place. They're not in direct response to the results of the survey, those are programs that are happening, and I, I don't mean to sound argumentative, but I'm just saying, those are not, programs are not going to happen if this survey doesn't happen.
Well, we're required to do, as a recipient of the Drug-Free Communities grant, we are required to survey 7th through 12th grade students every two years.
Right, but to Ms. Max and Cannelly's point, the results of this are not changing the program. That's programing you were going to be doing anyway. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, typically, you're not seeing that level of change in a two-year time span, but if you were to look over since 2009, when the coalition first was established, to now, you would see significant improvement in underage drinking and marijuana use.
I'd like to follow up on that, too, and I agree with Kathy that you don't see big changes over time, but you do begin to see emerging trends. So, on this survey particularly, there had been a request to add social media questions on here, for us to get a good idea around time spent on that and how that might be impacting some of our kids, and also as gambling became legalized, getting a little bit better handle with discrepancies around gaming and gambling, as that becomes a more emerging trend, too. So, it's emerging trend, plus the changes over time for the existing, but, so I don't necessarily agree that you wouldn't change what you're doing, you might augment or actually alter your target population, might change, your target age group might change, maybe you realize you have to go a little bit younger, so there could be to actually changes to how things get utilized based on. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, so, I guess I'll just say, I am concerned about this amendment. While I completely understand the rationale behind it, I think I'm more concerned about the reaction of this board at the last meeting, especially having been on this board for 11 years and sat through multiple discussions about this with different boards, but granted, the last time, eight out of the nine of us were sitting here and we unanimously approved it. I'm just troubled that we're setting a precedent here, and I am hoping that this is not the result of some really ugly and inflammatory emails that we received, that use some really horrible language regarding and making inferences about the questions that are being asked. And I sincerely hope that that's not the reason behind it, but I worry that that will be perceived as the reason behind it, that a very small group of people have made these statements, made these inferences, said these very ugly things about marginalized, at-risk students. And as a result, we are changing things, because we don't want to inflame things even more. So, I hope that's not the reason, I hope there are other things behind that, but I just worry that we are setting a precedent here, that if we get an outcry from a group of people, that we're going to change things in ways that might not be helpful for some of our most vulnerable students. And we're worried about mental health issues, we're worried about supporting these students. I can think of no better way to do that than supporting this as it was originally presented to us and has, as it has been presented to us in the past.
I can assure you that those emails, the social media posts, have no bearing on the changes that were being made.
I'm just going to ask for consensus by the board to change our end time to, I'm going to say 12:30. We might end up earlier before that, but we have to, I, we do need to have the facility conversation, and I'm, excuse me, because we have to do it before 11:00, Kathy, I don't mean to interrupt you. If we end early, that's fine, but we need to get the ideas on redistricting.
Uncharacteristically, I'm going to suggest we push it to 1:00. These are big discussions we need to have. If we're not going to take them off the agenda, we need to...
We're not taking them off the agenda.
We need to have enough time for them.
Okay, amend it to 1:00 AM. Again, if we end earlier, sorry.
Can maybe the old time, I have to say that you have their own...
Yes, go ahead.
I move to extend the meeting time to 1:00 AM.
All seconded, all in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson? Is that five? Motion passes, 5-4. I didn't, oh, sorry. So, motion fails. Okay, back to 12:30? Mrs. Vitale, seconds. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson? 7-2. It's, oh, sorry, opposed? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Kelly, motion passes, 7-2. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, Kathy, and sorry, Mrs. Gerber, after your comment. Anyone else have a comment on the amendment? Mrs. Vitale?
I agree with Mrs. Gerber. I, you know, I'm really, I'm really struggling with, you know, my gut feeling is that I don't approve it, I approve the original language as presented. Seeing a red strike-through line through the word transgender, I feel like we are, that's a strike-through of our, you know, it just feels like we are striking a group of our students. And I, and I know it's, maybe it's just the visual, and it's not accurate, but I'm struggling with it. I will be supporting the amendment, because like Ms. Guernsey, I don't want to see it fail, and I appreciate, you know, your work in moving this forward.
Mr. Peterson?
I just want to stress and make sure this is correct, these are language changes that Fairfield Cares is proposing. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
And just to clarify, this is, these are changes that Fairfield Cares was proposing as a result of the Board of Ed discussions two weeks ago.
Yes, we took into consideration of the comments from the previous board meeting, and I have to say, too, the silver lining of all this discussion has led me to an opportunity to meet with and get to know several advocates of the LGBTQ community in Fairfield, that I have not had exposure to or knowledge of prior to this point. And so, I feel very comfortable to Mrs. Vitale's issue, to be addressing and having the ability to reach out to address transgender issues because of that. So, and that would not have happened otherwise.
Mrs. Vitale?
Hi, thank you. You know, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch it. I appreciated the discussion, I do think the one change that Mr. Peterson brought up is that we have this administrative guidance that was not there in prior years. And when I read through the administrative guidance, it is in conflict with the survey. Now, the one thing that bothers me, and over the past few years on a multitude of topics, is the sort of inflammatory emails that we get on one side against the other, that are just very angry and diminishing of another side's perspective, and I think we have to be really careful of that, to really take the time to listen to why we put these administrative, administrative guidance out, or why Dr. Tracy worked on this, is because we were having issues in district, and we were trying to clarify it for our staff. So, keeping that in mind, when I think about this, my only concern really on some of these questions is the age of the students. I know that not all 12-year-olds understand what these terms mean, and I understand that they can skip questions or that it's anonymous, but my concern is merely asking the question may not be developmentally appropriate for some of those ages of kids, like the younger So, and that really has sort of been amplified, I think, to me, over the last year and the discussions of some of the things that have happened within the district, which really led to the administrative guidance. So, I don't, some of the comments I've heard, it crosses a dangerous line in these topics with their younger students in particular, because there's sort of a tone that, you know, "We have to do this because the parents don't know what they're doing," or "The parents aren't supportive at home," or it's, and I just want to be really careful, because that's sort of where I see the anger coming from in some of the emails, is sort of a line crossing on topics of gender identity or sexuality being spoken to a 12-year-old, or asked of a 12-year-old, whether or not you can opt in or out, or it's anonymous. So, it still somewhat makes me uncomfortable. I, I don't know, I guess I was really waiting to hear the perspectives of everybody, because I appreciate the dialogue that we have here at the board table, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thank you. To speak specifically to that, I actually think the amendment does a good job of alleviating some of those concerns, because honestly, I had to look up some of the definitions of the terms that were there before, just so I was very clear as what the differences are. So, and honestly, as a preventionist, and the data points would be so small, since we are talking about a random sample of students, that I don't think we would be doing anything different for those who are identifying as pansexual versus, I don't know, something else.
And I just do want to clarify, because I know someone had mentioned before, that their child knew at nine years old, or, you know, and I just, what's typical for one child, or what's right for one child, is not right for all children of that age, it is not necessarily developmentally appropriate for all children in middle school or 7th graders, and when we're talking about respecting one child or trying to protect one child, we also have to think about the other child and protecting that child. So, this really does become, to me, really difficult, because I am very aware of another situation with a child in middle school, feeling the pressure of having questions answered and not really knowing, and then feeling the pressure to answer a certain way, and that, to me, is what some of these parents are talking about, and I don't want them to feel like we're not hearing them, because there's this, "You're against these kids if you think this way, you're against these kids," and it's really not, this is complicated. And I just, I kind of want to give a voice to all of those parents, because this is tricky.
Oh, there's no question about it, it is tricky. And, you know, those parents that have voiced the objection, now, I don't agree with the vitriol, I mean, that's not necessary, but those parents are coming from a place of love for their kids, and I, and I know that. What we're trying to do is to walk a very, try to find a middle ground that satisfies our need, as the coalition, to collect the data that we need to be able to look at the different populations within our community, and, as I said before, be very pragmatic about it. So, I think that what we've ended up with, I think, is a, is a good middle ground. And as a coalition, you know, we are wanting to be sure that we're making space for all, you know, our mission is to help all children thrive, and we want to be sure that all children are heard and seen, and that speaks to those who may not have a smartphone as their 5th grade graduation, right? But I dare say that there are probably a lot more kids out there that know more about some of this stuff than I do at this point, because they have access, they're accessing stuff, and I don't really care. But, in any event, I think the coalition is coming from a place of looking at this from, as I say, just from a utilitarian perspective, what is it that we want to know? Why do we want to know it? And are we going to use this data? Yes, we're going to use this data.
Mrs. Vitale?
Ms. Vitale, thank you. In terms of the parent perspective, and some of my comments just really come from when I was, you know, looking at this data as a parent and as a PTA president, and meeting with other parents and looking at it, and some of the data was surprising, and what we, what we learned about our children, and it helped me become a better parent, and in some conversations, I think, helped, you know, things, appreciating that times have changed, and maybe sometimes what our students know and our kids know, they're ahead of us at times, and maybe know more than we think, and sometimes this information is valuable, just to kind of appreciate that and use that as a way to best support our children. And the fact that our parents can opt-out... And the fact that our parents can opt out, because our parents know their children better than anyone, that there is this option to either opt out or to have the conversation with their students before the survey is given. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathy, for coming up. At this point, if nobody has any questions, I'm going to take it to the public for comment on the amendment and on the amendment only.
Hi there, Erica Garvey, 9D, Robertson Crossing. I want to say thank you. I think what Bonnie just explained, and what I think everyone here needs to understand, is that parents of this community are 150% behind our LGBTQ children, students, staff members, community members. But asking an 11-year-old girl who she prefers to be sexually intimate with does not say that we do not support the LGBTQ community. We are allowed to be concerned parents, and we are allowed to ask the questions. But what is not right is for anybody to say that we are against this community, and that has got to stop. So, I appreciate everything, Bonnie, that you said. And I also think that the superintendent wrote the guidelines this summer, because you all know very well what happened in middle school. And it was inappropriate, and it crossed lines. No one should be giving any sort of advice to children. Now, all we're asking for is some understanding of that. We want Fairfield Cares to continue doing the great work that they do. Thank you. And all of you are really, really amazing. I've talked to a lot of you, and I appreciate everything you do. But we can't continue to drive this wedge. There's got to be some sort of middle ground. And I will tell you that the original survey absolutely crossed the line, not only in accordance with the binding guidelines that Dr. Tracy put forward, but with what we said we were all going to do as a community. But yet still, some of you even liking Facebook posts of children asking other children in seventh grade their pronouns. It's not that we don't support them, it's that some parents talk about love is love, and you can marry who you want. That certainly happens at our home. But what we don't talk about is at 11-years-old, who you're going to be sexual with, because it's not appropriate. And these are two different topics, so let's not cross them. Thank you.
That's good advice. Okay. Annalise Karen, 147 Collingwood Avenue. Thank you for this discussion. I am a Fairfield parent. I am also a local child and adolescent psychologist who's been in private practice for 18 years and 12 years here locally, working with the community. I wanted to speak to a few things specifically that Mrs. Vitale and Mrs. Vitale just spoke about, and the woman who just spoke as well. First of all, with specifics with regard to the amendment, my support of the amendment and my support of the survey, there have been concerns about giving this survey to 11-year-olds. Just to clarify, no 11-year-olds are going to receive this survey. The survey has been given to kids in seventh to 12th grades in February, so at that point, everyone is 12-years or older, just a point there. In my experience as a clinician, children do often identify as members of the LGBTQ community by seventh grade, often beforehand. These are conversations that are openly happening among children and friends. Example from my own personal life, not as a clinician, my daughter before fifth grade, going to summer camp, came back and just reported to me that some of her bunkmates were lesbian, and one individual identified as non-binary and asked for separate pronouns. This was just a matter of fact to my daughter, it was not something of concern. And that is what I find with a number of kids, being very sensitive to what Mrs. Vitale just shared with us, that parents have concerns and certain children may not have a full understanding of some of the vocabulary that was used in the original draft of the survey. I think that is, that is accurate, that some 12-year-old children may not know what all of those words mean. I would call people's attention to the possibility of, you know, skipping questions that they're uncomfortable with or unsure of. Finally, we have to remember what this is about. From former Fairfield kids surveys, we know that there's a big increase in substance use between eighth and ninth grades. This suggests that precursors and risk factors of use are best identified in middle school. And having richer data sets to understand the risk and protective factors in those years, it's important for prevention. It's also important to be able to track change over time, as we've discussed. During the last VOE meeting, a point was brought up about if we know that members of the LGBTQ community are more at risk, then why do we have to ask this, these questions? We know this already. We have to ask these questions so we can understand the specific concerns of our community here. Finally, with regard to the binding guidelines that a few people have brought up, I am not sure exactly what binding guidelines mean, but to my understanding of them, I would like to state, as a parent, I both 100% agree with the spirit of not having teachers be allowed to ask people about their identity, how they identify. And I also support the Fairfield Cares anonymous survey of the amended, with the amended questions. To my understanding, the purpose of not having teachers ask students these personal questions is about respecting the LGBTQ.
And it's, and thank you so much, but thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to take it to the board. So, this is a vote on the motion to amend the survey per the Fairfield Cares submission. So, all in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly. All opposed? Mrs. Gerber, abstention. Oh, pardon? Oh, you did? I'm sorry, I didn't see. And Mrs. Vitale for yes. So, motion passes eight one. Yes, thank you. I've been in meetings since 4:00 PM, so I just, it's almost been 12 hours. So, back to the main motion, and to approve, approval of the 2023 Fairfield Cares survey as amended. Back to the public.
It's still good evening, not good morning yet. So, my name is Ryan E. Noor. I reside on 83 Alberta Street here in Fairfield, in the Stradfield section, and I volunteer as vice chair of the Fairfield Cares Community Coalition. And I know many of you from my days on the PTA and in other various capacities. And I share my comments tonight as my personal views as a town resident and parent of four young adult children, each of whom attended Fairfield Public Schools from K through 12. And I thank you for your volunteer service here and for taking your responsibilities serious, and you are asking questions and seeking additional input when you consider topics brought before you, no matter what the hour might be. And we've always enjoyed the gracious support of Fairfield Public Schools when we administer the survey numerous times in the past. And we've gone through that it's anonymous, and parents are provided the opportunity to opt out, and they, survey takers can also choose not to respond to individual questions, except the question asking for their grade level. And I do urge you to accept the survey scheduled for early 2023 as now amended. And, you know, the aspect that was questioned is really not an issue, that you already realized that we are not in conflict with this staff directory that was passed out. So, thank you, Mr. Peterson, for pointing that out yourself. And, you know, asking the survey how students see themselves, just as we have done in the past, demonstrates that every child is valued and seen for who they are without boxing them in. And the survey is a snapshot of a moment in time. So, if a student happens to take the survey again and at that point views themselves differently, that's okay too. And asking the question during the crucial middle school years is not causing harm or giving kids ideas. In fact, it is validating adolescents who are questioning and finding themselves at this time. And I feel it's really on the contrary, if this question were removed from the survey, we would cause harm by not validating and recognizing every student we serve. So, I do appreciate the comments that were made on the, meeting on the 29th, but I, I'm sure that it's not the board's intent to cause any harm. And I'm not going to go to my last paragraph, because it talks about data points and trends, and we've talked about that ad nauseam. So, I thank you for listening to me and for giving us this opportunity. And I do hope that you will all find yourselves supporting the survey once again, so we can continue working on behalf of our young people.
Good evening. Thank you very much, members of the board. I'm Kristin McCarthy-Wehhe, longtime co-chair of Fairfield Cares, mother of three children through the Fairfield Public Schools, social worker and state rep, soon to be co-chair of the Public Health Committee for the state of Connecticut. I want to thank this board for this conversation and the leadership of Fairfield Cares. We all care very deeply about children. It's why we spend the time, you do, and we as Fairfield Cares leaders. I'm here because of survey data that was presented by Riasap, and I was sitting in that seat. And Fairfield Cares was formed as a result of survey data responding to the needs of students. I want to respond to a few things, but first to start by saying, this survey is an opportunity for our students to tell us who they say they are, not who anyone else thinks, might guess, or assume they are. That's what these questions do. They also respond to the need and requirement of the CDC grant, which is $125,000 a year, which this volunteer group helps to secure for our community. And so, I'm grateful very much and ask for your support for this survey. Why did we change the questions? We reached a compromise. We had disagreement among the leadership team about compromising, but we came to a compromise because we heard the conversation here at the table last week, and we understood those needs. And we actually went back and reflected on those questions and just tried to figure out what we could do to best move this forward, to be sure that we could find out more about what was happening with our students. How will we use the data? We don't know yet. We won't know. The strategic prevention framework from the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration begins with assessment. That's what this is. We will assess, and then we will determine how to best use the data. Are these questions developmentally appropriate for middle schoolers? We've been asking them of our students, actually, the, the non-amended version, the original version, we've been asking them since at least 2014. We have received no reports of harm. We've had no indication of harm. In fact, we understand more about trend lines. I'm, I'm grateful, I appreciate that we passed an amendment which I hope will help us pass the survey. And in terms of parental concerns, there absolutely is room and validation for those parental concerns, which is why the survey has always had an opt-out, which is why every student has the ability to skip every question except for their grade level. There is absolute agency for every parent and every child. No one should be bullied in either direction on these issues. Those guidelines, in their outset, state that our goal is to create inclusive, caring, welcoming, and safe communities. That's our job, and we, as Fairfield Cares leaders, will continue to do that. I will acknowledge a December 2 Wall Street Journal article, "Data Scientists Grapple With How To Ask Your Gender." So, this is a difficult issue.
Sorry, Kristin, we're at three minutes.
And thank you.
But thank you. Main motion as amended. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson. All opposed? Mr. Asa, Mrs. Kelly. Motion passes seven two. Sorry. We are moving on to the next item, approval of the facilities planning document, the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the facilities planning document. Can I get a vote for motion? Mr. Asa, second. Mrs. Vitale?
Hey, everyone, I handed out, I submitted, and I handed out at your desk a series of amendments that I submitted on this document. Several of them are technical in nature, and two are a little bit more substantiative. So, I'm going to do those one by one, and that, I did that purposefully, just so everyone knows, so that people could feel free to vote for what they wanted or not. So, I hope that we do this quickly, and anyone else who has any further amendments can go forward. So, amendment number one is a technical edit, to be read as in Planning Principle Number Two, Class Size, motion to add a period after the last "two" in the last sentence and strike the parentheses in reference language. Can I get a second? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, any questions? I'll take it to the board, uh, public for public comment on this amendment and this amendment only. All right, back to the board on the amendment. All in favor? Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly. Motion passes eight oh. Okay. Amendment number two, in Planning Principle Number Seven, motion to strike the proposed, quote, "strive to maintain," and unstrike the existing language must have a commitment of maintaining. The other amendments as proposed originally remain as they were. Can I get a second? Mrs. Gerber, questions to the board? Mr. Peterson?
In the interest of time, I'll, I'll be opposing this amendment. I, I find that the strive construction strikes the right balance for me in terms of working hard to adhere to, to an idea, but not being handcuffed to an idea should we have a, a scenario that, that works. So, I, I just, I, it's an issue of emphasis for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we in our racial imbalance plan have reference to possible, and I can't remember the phrasing in the racial imbalance plan, of pocket redistricting if there are brand-new developments that might put a school into racial imbalance, and that that new development, by virtue of its newness, is not guaranteed to be in its neighborhood school, that it could possibly be sent to a different school? Wasn't that, again, I can't quote it, wasn't that in our racial imbalance plan?
Possibility. So, can I speak to that?
So, I will say therefore, for that reason, I would be opposing this amendment, but happy to hear your point.
Okay. So, in the racial imbalance plan as a possibility, yes, that is put in there, but I've already raised concern on that, not pertaining to this amendment, that we don't have any policy on that or any guidelines on it, which could come. And to both of your points, I would go on with the sentence that continues on to say, and, which, wherever educationally feasible and possible, and then the paragraph continues to go on, when possible, in terms of several other sentences throughout that paragraph that speak to the flexibility that I think that you are both saying that you would like to be seeing in this paragraph. So, the flexibility is built into this paragraph in the pre-existing language. Meanwhile, I think that it's important for this board to stand on the commitment of the concept of a neighborhood school, while understanding that the flexibility is contained in the paragraph. Anyone else? Mr. Asa?
Yeah, I mean, coming out of Facilities Committee, I'm, I'm comfortable with the language the way it was. I don't think by saying that we strive to maintain the concept of neighborhood schools means that, that we won't. I think Mrs. Gerber raised a great point a meeting ago, I think, in that these are not the steadfast charge, these are guiding principles. And when you continue on the way it was originally- And when you continue on the way it was originally written, where it says we should not be busing students past or away from their neighborhood school, I think it reiterates that, you know, we shouldn't be doing that, and we're striving not to. So I'm comfortable the way it's written.
So can you, just to follow up on that, if the flexibility was built in, can you just give us a little more background on why you strike the commitment in the Policy Committee then?
Because...
To your point.
Because right now, we currently do it. We currently...
Why did you strike the language, to your point that you just made, about having the flexibility already within the paragraph?
We changed the word commitment to strive. Because there's instances already where kids are not going to what would be considered by some their neighborhood elementary school. So we're already violating the practice as it was written.
Okay. We'll disagree to disagree with the flexibility in the remaining of this section. Anyone else have a comment? Mr. Peterson, no?
No, I would just, I would just add, in terms of the racial imbalance plan, that's the state-approved plan. We may have issues with how we would go about working with that, but that is the plan that was approved by the state.
Yes, but we didn't say that we were going to do that. We said we might do that.
No, I just want to make that clear, that it's in the state-approved plan.
Right, that the possibility of that focus redistricting. Correct. Mr. Asa?
Just to be clear, you know, as an individual board member, I have no motivation to not maintain, when possible, neighborhood elementary schools. That's not why I'm saying, and that wasn't the gist of the change that came out of the Facilities Committee. We were unanimous on this, based on what I said previously about how it's not being adhered to the way it's written now, and, again, thinking that strive was strong enough language. So that was our basis. Anyone on the Facilities Committee can feel free to chime in if I'm off-base.
No, I think that pretty much sums up the discussion we had in the Facilities Committee, that, you know, we appreciate that right now, you know, people have different definitions of what a neighborhood school is. You know, we've got the Jennings butterfly. You could argue that if you're living on Congress Street, Jennings may not be your neighborhood school. You know, those students that are going across the Post Road to go to Ruhr Field argue that's not the neighborhood school. We have students that go to Dwight that live off of, you know, probably Mill Hill is probably, distance-wise, closer to them, so they are not going to the neighborhood school. So we appreciate that sometimes circumstances may dictate, you know, students going to a different school, but there is an appreciation that we're going to strive to keep kids as close to school, I mean, close to home as possible for the school that they go to. Commitment from all of us to maintain that concept of not busing kids all over town while we landed with strive.
Thank you, Mrs. Vitale. Anyone else? All right, I'll take it to the public on this amendment and this amendment only.
David Krasnov, 155 Burr Street. I just feel like you're diluting it by going to strive. The word commitment's a much stronger word. And I'm not, again, not worried about this board. I think you all understand what strive means. I'm worried about a board 10 years from now. They could look at strive and do whatever the hell they want. If they want to redistrict their own personal kid to one specific school, they can't. So I just, I want you guys all to keep that in mind. Strive is a very, very loose term on a document like this. Thank you.
Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. This has already been quite an arduous process, redistricting in this community. I can say that, just as a parent, as a PTA leader, we've been encouraging everyone to follow along, to stay engaged, and I get concerned that one of the first votes that we're taking right now is to remove the word commitment to neighborhood schools. I do. I think that when you're telling parents to pay attention and follow along and read the documents, and the first vote that you're going to take is to remove that word, I think it does make an impact, not to just the board 10 years down the road, but to today. So I will implore you guys to look at those words individually, and striving ain't good enough. Commitment to our neighborhood schools is what we want, it's what parents are communicating. What they look like might be different, but when you're talking about school closures, I think taking away the word commitment is a heavy thing to do. So I would implore you not to do so. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing anyone else. I'll take it back to the board on this amendment. All in favor? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, and Mrs. Jacobson, and Mrs. Kelly. Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxen-Kinelli, and Mr. Peterson. Motion fails. 5-3. Five, sorry. Five-four. Four-five. Thank you, Jessica. Amendment number three, in Proposed Deleted Planning Principle Number Eight, motion to maintain a Planning Principle Number Eight on Temporary Solutions, parentheses, portables to read as follows. Eight temporary solutions, portables, the town will not rely on temporary portable classrooms as a permanent substitute for break and mortar classrooms. I added this item using a language from, sorry...
Hold on.
Second. Who seconded it? Mrs. Gerber, thank you. I added this back in, even though I know portables were, is addressed in the headroom principle, that's specific to headroom, and I think for two reasons. One, I added this back in because I feel like it's pretty important historically to capture what happened in our district regarding all of the portables that we had in use here, and how hard the town and boards before us and this board have worked to remove all of those portals from this district. So I think it's important to capture the history. But also, I think by removing it entirely, we're not having a principle included on its own merit pertaining to temporary solutions for our schools. So I think it's worthy to keep an item on here that, for us and for future boards, that says that we, you know, don't want to go back to relying on portables or temporary solutions for our buildings. So that's just simply the reason why I added this back in, trying to pull from the existing language. Any questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I second it, and I support this. You know, as someone who had their kids in portables for many, many years and, you know, really fought to get rid of them, and, you know, we just supported or voted in favor of Mill Hill, which got rid of some of the last portables in this district, you know, this town has had a bad history of repeating itself, and I think it's really important to mention this as a standalone, so that's why I support it.
Mrs. Vitale?
We went back and forth on this in Facilities Committee. I think your point is a good one, and I'll be supporting this amendment.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, I think Mrs. Vitale is correct. This was, this was not something we struggled with. It was, we took it out because we thought it was covered in the headroom, but I have no problem supporting this.
Mrs. Maxen-Kinelli?
I appreciate the description of the, as a history lesson in there. I think that's, because it hadn't phased me in the least when we took it out, recognizing that's where we are now, but I, too, will be supporting it because I do think it's an important statement to the other town bodies. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I'm happy to support this. I have no problem emphasizing this is something that we do not want to return to.
All right, I'll take it to the public on the portable amendment and this amendment only, if anyone has a comment. Okay, back to the board. All in favor? Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxen-Kinelli, Mr. Peterson, and Mrs. Kelly. Motion passes unanimously. Amendment number four is a technical edit. Since number eight did pass, it's really just to renumber, so I'll read the motion to renumber the remaining planning principles as follow. Renumber the first read proposed number eight to number nine, and renumber first read proposed number nine to number 10. So it's just renumbering. Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Any comment? Technical edit. All right, you know, it's exciting stuff, guys. Take it to the public. All right, and back to the board. All in favor? Mrs. Kelly, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Maxen-Kinelli, Mr. Asa? Oh, say unanimous. All right, thank you. Amendment number five, another technical edit. This is a motion to add a revised and adopted date below the original adoption date to read as revised and adopted on December 13, 2022. So just adding a new date on here that wasn't in the, oh, okay. Mrs. Gerber, second. All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Well, I have a comment.
Sorry.
I will not be supporting this. We don't ever do, when we change policy, we don't have policy changes that adds new dates.
Yes, we do. Every policy has a list of adopted and revised.
Yes, they do, but we do not have as...
Oh, as the motion.
As the motion that we need. So the point being, this simply gets done automatically. It's not, in my opinion, this is not needed, and so I'm not voting for it.
I would agree with Mrs. Kelly. I mean, Kinelli. I think this will, this will naturally be printed on the document once it's approved.
Okay, just because when it came to us as a first read, it wasn't in there, so I just wanted, so if that's covered, then...
Because it will be done after it's approved.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that motion then. All right, so we are back to the main motion, unless anybody else has anything else. Mr. Peterson?
Well, we're back to the very main motion. So the one thing that I, that I would say, comment at this point, and we don't have this document in front of us, is the 90 to 85 percent. I just want to voice that I am happy to approve the document as it's, as it's been amended. I do have some hesitation about going down to the 85 percent, again, on the, on the basis that we are limiting our options, but also being cognizant of the fact, and I think it's been argued that we may need extra space for special programming. I know I did, I did talk at the last meeting of, do we need this for all schools or just some schools? I'm kind of happy, I won't say happy, I am prepared to go into planning with the 85 percent, although, again, I just wanted to voice some, some reservations about that.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, and I've actually thought about this a lot since our last meeting, because some, some good points were raised. And I think, I think the idea of that kind of variability between the 85 and 90, depending on the building, may come into play. And again, the way I look at this is that it reverts back to that these are guidelines, they're, I'm sorry, they're principles. And I think that, that it doesn't handcuff us to make sure that it's 85, but it gives us a starting point. And based on the presentation from Mr. Mancusi tonight, I'm hopeful that we'll have all of those numbers incorporated into our plan. So on some of the buildings where we know the long-range projections we're putting us over, we plan accordingly. So I, but I do hear what you said from the Facilities side, and it's a valid point.
Yeah, and I just want to, just to follow up on that, I completely agree. I, you know, I, I keep using the term handcuff. I really am just looking for a process that is going to get us to as close to an optimal solution as possible. But I also do not want, overcrowded schools, I do not want us to be searching for space for CLCs when we need them. So I'm cognizant of all those, those forces, and I think we're just going to have to, you know, drill down to the details when we get scenarios from Melon and McBroom.
Okay, anyone else? All right, back to the public. We are back to the main motion on adoption of the planning principles. If anyone likes to make public comment, sure.
Hi, Mary Hoag, 165 Stonewall Lane, and Secretary for Sustainable Fairfield. And I just wanted to say how much we appreciate the sustainability addition to this document. It's been a wonderful pleasure working with Angeles Papa George on this kind of thing, and I proudly wear my Green Team pin. And thank you to Mr. Testani and Mr. Papa George to come to North Stratfield this past week, where they became Greenleaf certified. And we expect probably, we have four now in our district, we expect probably four or more this year. So the Green Teams are really doing a great job, which shows that it's a very important, sustainability is a very important concept for the schools, well, for the teachers, the students, the parents, and the administrators, because to be a Greenleaf school, you have to have all four of those in your cohort. So thank you very much.
All right, back to the board. All in favor? Your motion passes unanimously, 9-0. So this item, review of the 2019 charge to Melon and McBroom and discussion of updates, timeline, and associated budget. This item is really meant to just kind of look at where we were before the pandemic, what the charge to the consultants were when we were looking at this in 2020, before things shut down. So just raising this to the board to, as a reminder to discuss in terms of, want to provide an opportunity for everyone to just really go around and give ideas on what they are thinking about in terms of scenarios or guidance to the consultant. Not here tonight to debate those ideas or discuss or get into the weeds, to really just afford the board the opportunity to announce or declare any issues and scenarios that they want to look at. And from that, this process, leadership will go back and draft a charge to the consultant with all of that feedback, sorry, a first read, yeah, first read, of the charge that we will bring forth in early January to the board. And then there'll be plenty of opportunity in the interim, as early as Thursday evening, to start giving some feedback. So just want to go around, and really, at this point, we are going to test, I'm going to start with Mr. Asa, just as chair of the Facilities Committees, as he wants to add anything to what I've just said, but we will go around and collect ideas from people, things they want to look at, and that's how we're going to go. Thank you. Mr. Asa?
Yeah. I believe the, whatever I saw was flashed out as an advertisement for Thursday indicated a presentation.
Yes.
And so, sorry.
So from the Facilities standpoint, just humor me for a second before I get to any suggestions. We have been working with Mr. Testani and in leadership this last week or so to try and really look at our racial balance plan to the state and the timeline. And in that timeline, there were several things stated, which included, you know, providing this charge that we're working on now and hope to wrap up in January, so Mr. Testani can engage the consultant with the work. That was specified to be done by a certain date in the plan that was tentatively accepted by the state. Also in that plan, it discussed community conversations to solicit feedback, and it was on, I'm sorry, I'm exhausted here, but there's a few items included, racial balance, facility utilization, academic excellence, so those items. They, we have scheduled two community conversations, which will be started by a presentation from the superintendent. He will go through a short presentation, and there'll be an opportunity for the board and the public to engage. It will not be a traditional board meeting. It's a special meeting. It's a conversation. There will be some, maybe all, board members present. On Thursday, the 15th, and if this hasn't gone out yet, it should be very soon, a flyer with dates, this Thursday, the 15th, at the Fairfield-Ludlow High School cafeteria from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. will be an in-person, not livestream, but in-person, it will be recorded, opportunity. Then, moving forward, Mrs. Jacobson will go over the more detailed timeline, but that first read that she mentioned is planned to come to a special meeting of the board here on January 4th. At January 4th, that will be the special meeting workshop that we have talked about, I have mentioned at the board table several times, that will be dedicated to this charge for the demographer. The following day, January 5th, that evening, from 7:00 to 9:00 as well, there will be all virtual community conversation. So for anyone who couldn't attend or watch the recording of the 15th, that same presentation and same opportunity will happen on January 5th. So hopefully, with doing that, we will be back on or close to that timeline mentioned in the state-approved plan, and that's why we're here tonight at this late hour. Leadership felt that it was very important that, even though it is late, that we get this going for feedback from the board so we can get that first read on that January 4th agenda. Did I miss anything, Mrs. Jacobson, before I go to... Did I miss anything, Mrs. Jacobson, before I go to?
Perfectly said, that's great, go ahead.
So looking at this 2019 charge, I think, number one, my feeling is this will be, you know, taking into consideration what we just passed, so the wording on that will be revised. And there's been talk, I see green shirts out there tonight, supporting Dwight School, and there's been talk out in the community of possibly closing a school. This dates back to 2019, and this was actually one of the things on, one of the scenarios. But at that time, the understanding was that Mill Hill, you know, was going to be built to a 504 capacity. It was just turned over to us tonight as a 441. So that could play into the decisions of this board. But I do think that the more and more information that comes out, the more we hear from Mr. Mancusi, I'm not sure if a 10 versus 11 infrastructure would work. But I do think it's important, and it's our duty as a board, to get that information. And I'm not specifying that it's Dwight, but in the old one, it talked about repurposing an elementary school or other facility. So one of the things that I would like to see, so we can either continue this conversation or just once and for all take it off the table, would be that data, because I don't think we can do that without it. So for me, if we're all giving one thing, this is gonna be a big list, so I would like to see that stay on there.
The pre-existing language on closing or repurposing, or just closing?
I would say the feasibility of operating the district with 10 versus 11 elementary schools.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Thanks, I want to echo some of the things that Mr. Asa just said. One of the things that we are going to be asked as this process goes forward is, what did you consider, what options did you consider? We have to ask these questions, it's our job to ask these questions, because we will be asked these questions by other town bodies. And, you know, I will say frankly that I am skeptical now that we are going to be able to go from an 11 to a 10 based on the 85 percent, but I need to see the numbers. I'm not the one who is qualified to do that, I would like to see both of those. I would also like to see, one of the things that I keep going back to is the unified facility for the ECC. And I actually mentioned this in an open board meeting about four years ago, and I'm surprised I've gotten no emails about it. But I would be interested to see what would happen if we converted Jennings to an ECC property that would regain us the four classrooms at Stratfield. And given the changes in the demographic projections 10 years out, I see that as a possible solution, something that might fit. So that's, converting the ECC to, moving it to Jennings under one roof, redistributing the Jennings population, reclaiming the four ECC classrooms at Stratfield.
Enclosure of the Ward ECC?
Possibly. Which, as we know, is already too small for the population in the ECC program, and has been for many years.
No, which is why we have another location, understood? I just want to make sure I capture the full breadth of.
Well, that scenario would also free up that space if there was some other purpose to which we could put it.
At Ward?
At Ward.
Even though it's built as a preschool?
It is still space in a school building with a separate entrance.
Right, okay, so just, okay, understood, all right, great. Mrs. Kelly?
I don't know if this is the level of detail that we're looking for at this point, but something that I've been bouncing around in my head was, I know that we had, I forget, brain spasm now, on, and we also got a follow-up email from the town hall about thinking about the way we break up the classes, like 6th grade would maybe be in an elementary building or something like that. But I would like to look at, I feel like every time we roll out a program, we say, it's gonna be impossible to roll that out to 10 or 11 elementary schools, you know? And what I also think a lot of the programming we do is K through 3, and then 4, 4th and 5th. So especially when we're thinking about things like the accelerated math and stuff like that. I think programs like that would be easier to roll out, easier. I'm well aware, I'm throwing that word out very loosely. And I feel like being able to roll out an accelerated math program to maybe half of the elementary schools, because it would only house 4th and 5th graders, would have a lot of benefits in that you have more students there to choose from. More students would be eligible, more students, there's more teachers to do a proper rotation, you know, just having all that. And then, again, K through 3 being, I know it's another transition for elementary schools, and I know there's busing, it's a lot easier said than done, but I would just, you know, early literacy, rolling that out, K through 3, and only five elementary schools as opposed to 11. It just seems appealing to me, and I don't know what the numbers would look like, I just like the idea of.
So the scenario is K through 4?
K through 3 and 4 and 5.
Schools?
Yes. No, just 4 and 5. I mean, again, it would have to depend on the numbers. There might be more K through 3 schools, because you have more students. So I'm not saying it would be an even 6 and 6, or 6 and 5, or whatever. I just think that K through 3 sounds like a natural breaking point, based on the programs we need to do, and rolling it out to 11 facilities as opposed to 5 or 6, then it becomes less cumbersome.
Don't want to get into too much, but clarifications.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to remind the board that, I believe it was Dr. Jones had floated the idea, I think, was it just correct, was it K 2 and 3 5?
K 2, 3, 5.
Yeah, so K 2, 3, 5, at just a couple schools, it wasn't district-wide. So what you're saying is, you're saying a district-wide, and would you be amenable to K 2, 3, 5, like in other districts? Or were you looking specific? I'm just making notes, so we do this right.
Right, no. K 3 seemed like a natural break to me, based on the way we were talking about Literacy Academy, and based on the way we were talking about accelerated math. I would be amenable to others. I just feel like we roll out programs that are kind of specific in those buckets, and we always get hit with, rolling that out to 11 elementary schools is either prohibitive in price, or, you know, that kind of stuff. So I'm not, you know, hell-bent on those numbers.
Mrs. Gerber?
I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but I think, you know, the K through 2, 3 through 5, because it was a split, because it's three grades for each, so there's more of a chance of it being even. The other issue, and this came up, we did discuss it, you know, because initially it was basically to solve racial imbalance at McKinley, so you're gonna have McKinley and Jennings, one be K through 2, 3 through 5. But there was also discussion about looking into it being a district thing. The issue with that, that we run into, is that usually you pair up schools. And if we have an odd number of elementary schools, you know, like you have kind of like brother-sister schools, so like one's K through 2, one's 3 through 5, so that they're kind of, I'm saying that would be a problem. We need an even number of schools to have those kind of pairs of schools together. So one of our elementary schools, if we keep the 11, if we go with the argument that we're not going to, you know, get rid of one of our elementary schools, which I personally don't think we can do, although I agree that we do need to be able to say that we can't, so we do need to show it. But again, if we're going down that road and saying we are going to keep 11 elementary schools, doing those 2 and 2 would mean that there would be one elementary school that would be odd man out, if we were following that.
Well, can I point out that if we followed her originally outlined pattern of K 3 and 4, 5, that the odd numbers of schools and the distribution, it'd be like a 2/3, 1/3 distribution, that may actually be a benefit.
I would just be really hesitant in that, I mean, again, really don't want to go down this road too much, but I'm just saying, I just, then you're talking about a really small percentage of the town, that would be just, that would be problematic to me for a number of reasons.
I do have a clarification, and then we will move on really quickly. But Mrs. Kelly, did you think about how that would impact, like feeder patterns? Like who would go to middle, like how that might impact the middles?
Wait, point of order, are we supposed to be seeking this level of detail, or is this brainstorming and throwing it out there?
We do need to know about the feeders if she's gonna include that in the charge.
To be honest, I have not thought about it that far ahead, but that, to me, I mean, we've talked about this as redistricting was going to affect every level. So if it's gonna affect every level, I don't want to sound insensitive to say that it doesn't really matter at this point. But at this, the feeder, no, I have not thought about it, is the short answer to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, Mrs. Guernsey, go ahead.
I was just gonna jump in on that, and I am interested in reconsidering the feeder patterns at both transition levels.
Just to.
Specifics to that?
No, I don't want to get into it right now.
So for your item, just to be clear, for the charges, I'm taking notes, you would want to look at the feeder patterns from elementary up, is that what you're saying?
So the feeder patterns at both transitions, so from elementary to middle and or middle to high school, and I guess also if there's a additional transition.
Just to get some clarification, so are you saying that you would just be, are we going to keep the precedent of having where you go to elementary school impact where you go to middle and high school? Or you're saying we're just gonna cut lines, and so, I know there are some people in the public who are always advocating for that. So are you talking about completely changing the way we're doing it? Or simply changing which, elementary schools go to which middle and high schools?
I'm interested in having a conversation about both, but the latter is not of personal interest to me. But I'd like to have that conversation.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Thank you, two ideas to throw out there. One was something that actually came to me in Parks and Rec. I was asked by the members of the board in terms of what we were considering for Dwight, that they had heard it was being considered as a middle school. Now, maybe that's covered under this feasibility idea. I am not, I want to make very clear, I'm not advocating for that, but to the idea of if that's an idea that's out there in the public, then we need to pursue that and find out, you know, where's the idea coming from? Is it something that would be of interest or of value? And if it's not, then to the request we've gotten from the public of putting ideas to bed, put ideas to bed. So I'm just saying, that's something that I was quite surprised at Parks and Rec, that they asked me that, and I couldn't answer it. So I will say that, one. Secondly, just in the, again, kind of inspired by the town hall, but a kind of crazy idea, I'll throw it out there. The notion of making Tomlinson 6th grade entirely, with 7th and 8th grade at our other two middle schools, as a notion of, if we're trying to be, to address that team concept, you need a greater critical mass per grade. There's also the point of maybe 6th graders don't belong in a building with 8th graders. But again, I'm just, if we're brainstorming on ideas, I'm throwing that idea out there.
Clarification, Tomlinson going where? I'm sorry, did you say on the Dwight site? No, but you said moving to.
No, that Tomlinson would be the site for 6th grade, all 6th grade. That 7th and 8th would be then divided between the other two middle schools.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, about the middle school idea at Dwight, I know this has been out there. I've talked about it myself, we, in terms of, I think that is longer-term strategic planning. And I would say, our Chair mentioned this at the town hall the other night, and this very closely echoes what I've been thinking. The timeframe under which we are operating is very compressed, versus what I think a lot of us would like. We are not going to have a lot of time to, you know, to loop in other town bodies, to find funding for construction projects, much less go into, you know, build anything new, at least not in this timeframe. I still think that may be a good idea for the more distant future, the farther future, but I don't know that we can consider things that are going to require the approval of large sums of money by other town bodies at this point in our planning.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Fair point. I guess what I would say is, one, I'm interested in the information, but again, if the board isn't, then it won't. Then we won't pursue that. However, I would rather do this, whatever it is that we end up doing. I would rather do it right, in a manner that no future board will have to revisit for a few decades. And if that means we go back and revisit the racial imbalance plan, then maybe that's something that we have to do, that we have gotten this approved. You know, members of the public have asked us to present plans before other town bodies. If we all got behind an idea, this might be something to pursue. Again, I'm not, it's not that I'm advocating for it, and I am sensitive to your point, Mr. Peterson. But much of what we've talked about, you know, even your idea of repurposing Jennings, it's gonna, would involve an immediate infusion of money to make that possible. So I think we have to expect that money is part of this. But again, this is a little uncharted territory for me as well, doing this type of a redistricting conversation, but leave that there.
Mrs. Guernsey?
I think I need a point of clarification, because I haven't been through this process. I don't know if this is too granular, but when we talk about, like, the issue of grandfathering in high school students, or really students at any level, is that something that we would need to include here? Because that would impact numbers as well. That's also a discussion that I'd like to have, but is this the time to mention that? Okay, so then, I'm mentioning that.
To seek clarification, when you say grandfathering, do you mean certain grades? Because.
So I don't have a formulated exact response to that, but for example, I would not like to see students that are already, have already started at one high school to then be moved to another high school. That would be a specific example.
So a level, almost like a level?
Yeah, but there might be other examples as well, but that's just one that comes to mind.
Mrs. Kelly?
And there's, I get, a lot of budget issues would come into play here as well, but I don't know if it's worth even considering. I mean, we have a huge dollar amount set aside for whatever it is that's happening at two schools. And I don't know if we could even get those approved, if there's, if it would make sense to have a plan to, if one of those schools had to be taken offline for even one year, to get renovated. You know, God forbid, like a situation in Westport, they had to shut down a middle school, and two other schools had to absorb that school. Like, would we even have the capacity? If we just had to bite the bullet, make the, like, do the renovations that we need to do, do what we have to do, do we even have the capacity to absorb those students temporarily somewhere else for one year, until we could get that school brought back online? Conversation to have, or if we just, we seem to be throwing spaghetti at the wall here, so I just figured I'd throw it out.
Can you hear anybody mention, oh, sorry, Mrs. Vitale?
I missed Mr. Asa's comments, I was out of the room, assuming that the whole Dwight or taking 10 to 11 has already been addressed. But in terms of the charge, just taking the 90 to 85, if that hasn't been mentioned, in terms of the ECC, while I appreciate wanting to have it in one location, there's not room at Ward, and I don't really see, in the short term, a elementary school being able to absorb all those students. So I would be interested in keeping it at Ward and moving it from Stratfield to Holland Hill, now that the Math Academy two classrooms have freed up there. And based on the board's touring elementary schools a few years ago, and the parameters that we set for the physical space there, just to refresh, you know, parking, bathrooms, lack of stairs, would want to see what that would look like. I would also be interested in looking at grandfathering. I don't necessarily know what grades, definitely would not want to pull 5th grade out of an elementary school. I'm not really sure about committing students for four years of high school, just given the number of students. But I am sensitive to, you know, our youngest learners.
Christine, just to clarify, four classrooms out of Stratfield, so no pre-K at Stratfield?
No pre-K at Stratfield.
Any particular reason why you feel that's?
Yeah, I think that was just based on our, when it was put there in the short term, we thought that it was going to help address the racial imbalance at McKinley, that being that it was close to McKinley, that families would opt in. That ended up not happening, and based on just initial conversations in terms of the space, and granted, we have not been there, access to the playground, stairs, the distance between the pre-K classrooms to get to OT, PT, speech, it just seemed like the newly renovated school, that there was a capacity there. I'd be open to changing that school. You know, curious if Mr. Mancusi has any just historical data in terms of those typical peers, or if there's a population of students in a particular neighborhood that might benefit from having a pre-K within walking distance? Just thinking it could potentially be advantageous to have a pre-K in one of our Title I schools as well.
No one has their hand up. Okay. So what I am interested in looking at is more around the direction that we give to the consultant, not just the scenarios. So I feel, for example, last time, we gave them the planning principles and the redistricting guidelines, and then we got back numbers that didn't include our special programming, and the utilization numbers were wrong. So I'm more interested in focusing on not only the scenarios that we're going to give to the, I feel like this is really loud, to them to look at, but how we want things calculated, how are we going to build in the social programming capacity that we're looking at across all levels? I'm also interested in if we are moving a large number of kids out of McKinley, what we're going to be doing with class sizes, and how, where we're going to build in the bilingual program. So the bilingual program will need to be something that we factor in as well into this. That's not for the consultant in terms of space, but I'll be looking at things like the class size guidelines, the calculations on functional, operational, and down to section calculations, loading levels that Mr. Mancusi went into today for CLCs, how those are factored in into our programming space. So those are some of my thoughts. And then just the overall goal, right? So like the first sentence here, where we were looking to resolve overcrowding at the time and racial imbalance. So, and just are the conversations that we've had, and I think that facilities have had, my understanding is that we are looking to resolve racial imbalance, but also more just facility utilization in general. So amending that opening sentence to, at first thoughts, and maybe I'll think about this more, but just what is our goal? Like, what is the main goal here? So, so some thoughts on where I'm coming from, and be a lot on the math, obviously, some of the programming, and what are we looking to achieve here? That's facilities, but also programming and what we need for our kids. Mrs. Vitale?
Do you think that by going to the 85 percent, we do just, we kind of built in that headroom for giving flexibility for specialized programming across the board?
I mean, obviously, we do. We give, you know, but I think it also will vary by building, and it depends on where the lines get mapped. I mean, 85 percent's not going to be universal, obviously, and we have different sized schools, so it might look differently, and we know that some special programming can only go in certain schools, it can't go in all schools, so I'm just interested in seeing how that will play out, and where they decide to put things based on some of the parameters that we have for that, so. Yes, Mrs. Max and Kelly?
So, Mrs. Jacobson, to that point, we would need a list of which, you know, buildings, that, CLC has a lock for that building, obviously, because that's not the case with all of these programs. So we would need to get that information, because we don't know that.
Correct. Mr. Peterson? No? Okay, so given we're going to finish up here, and we have a few more things on our agenda, Mr. Asa already walked through the dates, so everyone knows. Thursday night, community conversation, 1-4, draft charge, 1-5, virtual community conversation, and then the plan is at this point that we will vote on the charge on 1-10. Mr. Sestani, I don't know if you want to speak to your parts of the racial imbalance plan right now, getting in touch with the consultant, making sure that they're ready to go, and all of that. But that is happening, correct?
Well, now...
Okay. That will be, so I know Courtney's not out, and I don't know if facilities want to briefly just touch on the fact that, I know we hadn't budgeted for this, is that something that finance talked about, or just how are we, did we have any update on the budgeting? But if not, we can talk about it, maybe in a Friday memo or something like that. Go ahead.
I think we move on.
Well, I would like an answer on the budget piece of it, just at some point. Right. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your ideas. And of course, if anything else comes up, feel free to email me and CC, you know, obviously, Nick. All right. Moving on, approval of the minutes. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following minimum minutes, 11:21, 22, BOE special meeting minutes, 11:29, 20, 22, BOE organizational meeting minutes, and then 11:29, 20, 22, BOE regular meeting minutes. Mr. Asa, do I have a second? Mrs. Vitale? Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Vitale, motion passes 8-01. Mrs. Vitale's abstaining. Got it. Thank you. All right. Superintendent's report.
Given the time, we will pass on the superintendent's report tonight.
Okay. Committee liaison reports. Mrs. Vitale?
So late. If you don't want to go to the community conversation on Thursday night, go to the Fairfield Septisocial. It's at Fairfield Social on 116 Post Road at 7:00, and if it's, community conversation is over, I'll meet you there after.
Any other committees? Great. Open board comment? Oh, hand up. Did you raise your hand?
Yeah, well, briefly, and then you went away.
You did? Okay, I don't think you did.
We had a meeting of the finance committee last week. We saw some preliminary numbers on the upcoming budget. Courtney walked us through the way she is considering making assumptions about healthcare going forward, basically just laying the groundwork for conversations that we will be having in January.
Wave y'all.
And the Google sheet. We talked about the Google sheet in some detail.
And I'm kind of interested in the placemat. I'm kind of interested in bringing back the placemat, just saying. Open board comment? Mrs. Vitale?
Just anyone still listening to our staff, I want to wish everybody a very happy holidays and a happy new year, and I hope everyone enjoys the break. You guys all deserve a break. And that's really it. A lot of exciting holiday stuff coming in the week ahead.
I just want to say that I'm glad we didn't go to 1:00.
Public comment?
Hi, I'm going to be quick. Katie Flynn, 204 Granby Road. I'd be remiss not to say something, because I made public comment about it for, about, I think at least four of them, about the community forums. And as much as I very much appreciate you guys getting back in line with your racial imbalance plan to the state, I do want to acknowledge that, as a PTA leader, it is very difficult to get people out to meetings. It is incredibly difficult to get people out to meetings in the two weeks before the holidays. So I'm just saying, in the dates, you guys had three months, and now we're jamming two meetings within two weeks. So I very much appreciate the community conversations. I will be at both. I will be encouraging our populations to do the same, but I would encourage you to have more as this process continues. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn. Mr. Peterson, second. Mrs. Vitale, all in favor? It's unanimous we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays.